Good afternoon. I'd like to call the Planning Commission meeting to order. It is four thirty, thirty on Thursday, May twenty ninth, two thousand and twenty five. Before we go into the agenda, I have some announcements that I'd like to make. I want all cell phones turned off. If you do have them on vibrate because you're expecting a call, please step outside the chamber office before you answer the call. All speakers must step up to the audience. I know sometimes you want to stay in your seat and talk because you find it difficult to get up to the podium, but we do need it on your testimony on record, so please step up to the microphone. I'm going to limit the amount of time that you have to question or make your comments. I'd like your comments to be respectful and kept to about two minutes. If you are a spokesman for a group, I will allow a little bit longer time, but I don't want a lot of repetition. So if we've had four or five testimonies questioning or commenting on one thing, if you have something else to comment on, that would be great, but try to keep your comments concise because of the size of the audience. And if the commissioners should have to leave early because this is expecting to be a long meeting, please tell us now, so we, but we need to keep it warm, so. Okay, thank you. Excuse me, we are also going to limit the readings as much as possible because you've all had a chance to read and review except for River Haven. If someone hasn't had a chance to read or review that because it was posted wrong in the initial mailing, we'll, I'll have more questions when it comes to that, what we can skip and what we cannot skip. Excuse me. First item on, on the agenda will be the approval of the minutes from the April twenty four, twenty twenty five Planning Commission meeting. Are there any questions, comments, changes? I'd entertain a motion.
I'll offer a motion to approve.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Minutes have been approved, thank you. Public hearing notice, public hearing portion of the meeting is now open. The first item on the agenda is the PUD for Copper's Highland Apartments, nine oh one North Highland. Staff report, please.
All right, good evening, Commission members and members of the public. John Nysley, planner with the City of New Ulm. This is a public hearing to consider the general development plan associated with the proposed plan unit development zoning district to accommodate an apartment project. The applicant for this plan unit development is Steve Keepers of Keepers Incorporated. The property owner is Keith Marty. The current legal description of the property are parts of outlots one ninety four, one ninety five, one ninety six, and one ninety seven. The proposed new legal description would be lots one through four, block one Highland Apartments addition, that includes outlots A and B. Street address for the project is nine oh one North Highland Avenue. The property location is southeast of the New Ulm High School, northwest of the Kids Excel, Excel Center, and then west of North Highland Avenue. Deadline for a decision on this application is July eleventh, two thousand and twenty five. The comprehensive plan land use designation for this property is high density residential. Surrounding comprehensive plan land uses include to the north, low density residential, medium density residential, public, semi-public. To the east, it's low density residential, to the west, low density residential, and then to the south, commercial, low density residential, and parks and open space. Current zoning designation of the property is A dash O S, that's Agricultural Open Space Zoning District, and it's proposed to be PUD, that's Plan Unit Development. So the purpose of the AOS, the Agricultural Open Space District, is to provide areas that will, one, be retained in agricultural use in advance of the need for these lands for urban purposes, two, to prevent scattered non-agricultural uses from developing improperly, three, to secure economy and governmental expenditures for public utilities and services, four, prevent inappropriate development in flood hazard areas of the Minnesota and Cottonwood Rivers, and then five, to provide locations for public and semi-public uses. Surrounding zoning to this property, to the north is AOS and INSE, that's the Institutional Education District. To the east, it's R one, that's the single family residence district, also R two, that's the single and two family residence district, and R three, that's the medium density residence district. To the south is R one, and then to the west is AOS. Currently, the property is farmed. Current area uses include to the north, farmed in the New Ulm High School, to the east, twin homes and single family homes, to the south, daycare center, single family homes, and then to the west is also farmed. Notice was provided to all property owners within three hundred and fifty feet of the subject property and mailed on May sixteenth, two thousand and twenty five, and then published in the New Ulm Journal on May seventeenth, two thousand and twenty five. Public comments. So staff has received three emails, two phone calls regarding this proposal. The emails provide information in opposition to the proposed project and are provided in attachment nine correspondence from neighboring residents. I would also note that since this was published to the public, we had received a number of other email correspondence regarding this project. Those are also included in the packet and, and published as well. The first phone call regarding the project was a residence within the neighborhood, but not within the three hundred and fifty foot radius of the area. That resident also sent a letter and it's included in the packet here. They were concerned about traffic, view from their home, and the notice should be mailed out to residents further than the three hundred and fifty foot radius. Second phone call was regarding the proposed stormwater ponds that would be constructed by the developer of the project. Their concern was having water in the ponds and the potential for mosquitoes in the neighborhood. Staff has been advised that the proposed stormwater basins will be designed to retain water, depending on the intensity of the rain event, for one to two days at, at the most, and then will be dry. Two additional emails with concerns over the proposed project were received on May twenty third, twenty, uh, May twenty fifth, and then again on May twenty eighth. Those emails, again, are found in the packets included, included here. I also did receive one additional phone call yesterday morning regarding the project and it, uh, by a neighboring property owner, and we went over the project in details of, of the proposal. That being said, there are roughly nine pages of emails and correspondence regarding this project. They are included in the packet and are of public record. I'm not going to be reading through those emails individually, but we did try to summarize at the end of this presentation what the concerns were and staff's response to them. Status of utilities. Utilities are located in North Highland Avenue. Utilities are also located in Fender Drive, Haberly Avenue, and Warshew Avenue, and they approach Seventh North Street. Portion of the property is served by the stormwater pond located adjacent to Fifth North Street. Stormwater is also directed to North Highland Avenue. The developer plans to install additional onsite stormwater controls and to be located in the southwest corner of the property and adjacent to North Highland Avenue. The pro, property will be fully served by the city and public utility systems. City engineer has provided more detail regarding the status of utilities in the vicinity of the proposed project. You can see that in attachment eight, City Engineer's Review of Traffic Circulation and Status of Utilities. The apartment property or project would have direct access to both North Highland Avenue and the extension of Tenth North Street. Curb cuts already exist on North Highland Avenue at Ninth, Ninth North Street and Tenth North Street. Traffic exiting from Tenth North Street will only be able to turn southbound on North Highland Avenue due to the center median. Traffic exiting from Ninth North Street will be able to go north or south on North Highland Avenue. Again, the city engineer has reviewed the project, site plan, and the anticipated traffic volumes, and has concluded that North Highland Avenue will be able to accommodate the additional Right-of-way. The plat, with the plat, the developer is dedicating approximately forty-three thousand seven hundred and fifty square feet, or approximately one acre, of right-of-way to allow for the construction of the extension of Tenth North Street. The city engineer has reviewed the plat and supports the proposed right-of-way dedication as shown in the Highland Apartments addition preliminary plat. The comprehensive plan does not designate a park within this platted area. So this is a summary of the project proposal. We are going to be going through this rather than reading through the entire general development plan, which is, is many pages, but that again is of public, public record and can be reviewed at any time. So the, for the purposes of evaluating this project, staff has used the standards assigned to the R four, that's the high density residence district. The subject property has a total area of ten point two acres, and the property has been farmed in the past and is currently being farmed. The proposed project would involve the construction of four three-story apartment buildings, eight detached garages, along with a sports court, children's playground, dog park, parking lots, stormwater ponds, and the extension of Tenth North Street from North Highland Avenue to the west. Each building is proposed to have two thirty-eight unit apartments, along with two thirty-six unit apartments with a mix of studio, one and two bedroom units. The project will be constructed in two phases. There would be a total of one hundred and forty-eight units proposed for the site. The R four lot area requirements would allow up to two hundred and fourteen units on this property. The developer is proposing fewer units than what would normally be allowed on that site. The proposed buildings have been positioned in a northeast to southwest-surly orientation. The developer has stated that the reasoning for this orientation was to have the narrowest portions of the building facing the existing residential areas. Staff has received preliminary landscape plans, and there are evergreen trees being proposed on all sides of the property facing residential areas that could provide screening. The developer is proposing to construct an extension of Tenth North Street with underground utilities. The street will extend from North Highland Avenue to the west, and the street right-of-way will be sixty feet wide and one hundred and seventy-three feet in depth, one hundred seven, sorry, seven hundred and thirty feet in depth. Environmental review. Staff has reviewed the requirements of the State Environmental Quality Board and their thresholds for requiring a mandatory EAW. The proposed one hundred and forty-eight units on the ten point two acre site is under the city's high density residential land use maximum density amount of twenty-one units per acre. The proposed project is fourteen point nine residential units per acre. Because this project does need, not meet the mandatory EAW criteria set forth in state statute, an EAW is not required. Chapter, so this is the approval process for a plan unit development project. Chapter seven point nine of Appendix A of the City Code allows for the establishment of a plan unit, uh, Plan Unit Development Zoning District. The definition of a plan unit development is a type of development, development which may incorporate a variety of land uses planned and developed as one unit. The PUD is distinguished from traditional subdivision process of development in that zoning standards such as density setback, height limits, and minimum lot sizes may be altered by negotiation and agreement between the developer and the municipality. The intent of the PUD is to allow for some deviation from the definitive and precise requirements of the established zoning district. This is permitted if the particular areas can be developed, particular areas to be developed can offer greater value to the community and can, can preserve the community's health, safety, and welfare if those same areas were to be developed as a single purpose district. So to establish a PUD, the following documents need to be approved. Rezoning of the property by ordinance to PUD. The rezoning of the property would be effective upon the city council's adoption of the PUD General Development Plan for the project. A PUD General Development Plan is described in chapter seven point nine, a development agreement, and then finally a final plat. The approved general development plan will establish the permitted uses within the development that are desirable and achieving the objectives of the plan unit development. However, there must be clear evidence that such, that such uses are desirable and appropriate with respect to the primary purpose of the development. Such uses are not of a nature or so located to exercise a detrimental influence on the development or the use of surrounding neighborhood. The general development plan is intended to illustrate the intent and the general nature of the proposed PUD and to establish the requirements and standards that will apply to the project. I would note that we have that same, we have that same language in all three Plan Unit Development items tonight. I'd prefer if I just read through that one time and then not read that on the other two, if that's okay with the commission.
Please.
Okay.
We're in agreement.
Super. So documents to be approved to secure the Plan Unit Development Zoning District. Number one is a general development plan, and that's currently being considered here tonight. Two is an ordinance approving the Plan Unit Development Designation, that's pending. Development Agreement, it's also pending, and then a final plat. Preliminary plat was approved at the May sixth, two thousand and twenty five council meeting. The final plat is to be considered by the Planning Commission at today's meeting. So what we put together, I'm going to pull this up on the screen. Are exceptions to the R four development standards that the developer is requesting some derivation from. And if you look, if you go through the ordinance standards for the R four district, the building setbacks for the front yard would be thirty feet. The developer is proposing thirty feet, so they meet that requirement. They also meet the requirements of the interior side yard setback, the street side yard setback, that would be on tenth, the numbered street, and then the thirty-five foot rear yard setback. They also meet the parking setbacks, that was verified by their engineer again today, of thirty feet. They are required to have with one hundred and forty-eight units, two hundred and ninety-six stalls, that's two units per apartment, two parking stalls per apartment unit. They're proposing three hundred four, so there would be eight, eight additional stalls on the site for guests, things like that, so they meet that criteria. The maximum building height in the R four zoning district is forty-five feet. The developer is proposing forty foot, three inch height, so they're under the maximum building height. The minimum lot area for, in the R four is eighteen thousand square feet. The lot area here, because there are four, four different lots, range from eighty-seven thousand nine hundred and ninety-one feet to one hundred thousand six hundred and twenty-three feet, so they also meet that criteria. Minimum lot area per dwelling unit is two thousand square feet. They're proposing two thousand three hundred and fifteen to two thousand six hundred and forty-seven square feet per unit, so they meet their criteria as well. Minimum lot width is a hundred feet, and their lot widths range from two hundred and sixteen to two hundred and thirty-three feet. That criteria is also met. They also meet the minimum lot depth criteria. Where they, the one criteria that they do not meet in the R four zoning district, and this standard applies to all residential districts, is that you are, our zoning ordinance does not allow detached accessory structures to be placed in front of the permitted structures on the site. The permitted structures on the site would be the residences, so in this case it would be the apartment complexes. The buildings meet the setbacks, but they don't, but they don't meet the other criteria of being in front of the residents. And I'll go through that in a little bit more detail and why that was proposed that way. There are ten attachments. First, we have the application by the developer. The second attachment is the general development plan by the developer. Again, this goes over the whole project proposal, what's on this, what's on the site, and answers all the questions in the Plan Unit Development criteria that we here have in our city zoning This is the site plan. So here is North Highland Avenue. This is south, that's north, that's west. The two thirty-eight unit apartments, which would be proposed to be constructed in phase one, are here and here, buildings one and two, and those are front North Highland Avenue. The two thirty-six unit apartments, which would be constructed in phase two, are, thank you, I thought Steve fixed that, okay, um, would be here on the, on the south and west side of the property. of the property. The developer provided a couple, a number of renditions of the site. So this would be North Highland Avenue over here, seventh, seventh north over there, looking to the west. As you can see, the proposed apartments are inside, inside of the property with the garages on the perimeter. The developer described in their general development plan, part of the purpose of providing or putting the garages on the exterior is to break up the height of the apartments that are located behind it to help it blend in better with existing residential neighborhood. So again, he's, they're proposing a forty foot tall structure in the R one zoning district or in the other residential zoning districts, the maximum height your house can be is thirty-five feet, so they're five foot higher than what our maximums would be in our single family residence districts. You can also see in the middle here, we have a sports court, and then we also have a playground for residents or their children at that site. This is attachment three, the site location map, so again, North Highland Avenue, the area here outlined in black is the, is the property we're discussing here today, New Ulm High School, airport to the west, and then the Milford Heights development to Here's the zoning map. I N S E is the institutional education district, the high school. We have R two along North Highland Avenue, that's single and two family residence district. R one back here, that's a single family. R three over here by the, by the chancery. You have R two over here to the south and more R one, and then a little bit more R four here in the middle. This again is, is a layout of the property. You can see this area in darker gray is the parking lot area and then proposed extension of Tenth North Street. Here is the, the land use map and the comprehensive plan. This area was designated or changed to high density residential this spring. Planning Commission heard, heard that application, provided a recommend, recommendation to the city council in February. The city council heard that recommendation, recommended approval in March. Took a couple pictures of the site. This is facing south and west. You can see there in the background, that's the M L C fieldhouse. Here is from the corner of Kids Excel Center, looking north and west to the New Ulm Public High School. This is a photo from the south side of Kids Excel Center, again, looking kind of straight west towards the high school and the airport area. This is from the southwest side of the property, looking back towards the neighborhoods across North Highland Avenue. Attachment eight is the city engineer's review of traffic and the status of utilities. I will get into this a little bit more further on. So we had a number of letters and correspondence from neighbors who were in opposition to the project, and we've included them here. This letter that we received yesterday from Mr. Gustanzic also had ten signatures on it from neighboring property owners within that neighborhood who had opposition to the project proposal. One of those neighbors did call me yesterday and we had a discussion about the project and their concerns. We had another, we had another letter from Nicole Palmer, which is provided here. Email from Mr. Ryder. And then we also had another letter from Mr., Mr. and Mrs. Boudin. They were outside, those are residents that are outside the three hundred fifty foot required notice area, but they, they also had called and we had a discussion about the project due prior to receiving their letter. Then I had one more letter, email, sorry, come in yesterday afternoon from Ms. McAmara, and that's included as well. So staff, staff tried to, while we read through and discussed all of the letters and concerns that we, we had received, and I think what we can do then is take a look at those, and there were some reoccurring themes that kept popping up, and what we tried to do in, sorry, okay, sorry about that, guys. What we tried to do was to address them, to address them kind of together, to see if we could answer a number of the different concerns at the same time. So the first comment that we received was that our process was inconsistent with Minnesota statute four sixty-two point three five seven regarding zoning regulations and the consistency with the city's comprehensive plan. So a formal public hearing process did take place in front of the planning commission and city council to amend the comprehensive plan for this area, to be changed from medium and low density residential to high density residential. That process followed state statute and the process outlined in the city zoning ordinance. Public hearings took place at the planning commission in February and then again at the city council in March. Notice of public hearings were sent to residents within three hundred fifty feet of the subject property and published in the New Ulm Journal according to statute. Planning commission recommended and the city council approved the amendment in the comp plan. As amended, now guides the property for high density residential. There was also concern that we are spot zoning and setting a legal precedent with this, with this proposal. So surrounding land uses to this site include the Kids Excel Center, single family homes, twin homes to the south, twin homes and single family homes to the east, and a farm field in the New Ulm High School to the north. The wide right of way of North Highland Avenue, one hundred twenty foot right of way, area of mixed residential densities and varied uses in the area would provide for the consideration of higher density, higher density residential uses in the area. Current zoning designation is A O S, which is, which one of the purposes of the O S district is to retain, be retained in agricultural use in advance of the need for these lands for urban purposes. City has been consistent with the A O S district as a holding district for future urban development. The remainder of the marding property will be A O S, and the future development and road layouts will be contemplated by the planning commission at us and the city council at a future date. There's concerns about procedural deficiencies in due process in this, with this project. So the city has followed state statute along with the requirements outlined in the city's zoning ordinance for both the consideration of the comprehensive plan amendment and now this proposed plan unit development. Notification was sent in the mail ten days prior to the public hearing being conducted and published in the journal ten days prior to the public hearing as well. Notice was sent out to property owners within three hundred fifty feet of the subject property as required by statute and our zoning ordinance. Environmental review obligations. Stormwater management for this project is required to be adhered to, to both the city's stormwater standards and the standards provided by the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency. Stormwater management must be conducted onsite during, onsite during and following construction indefinitely. The city engineered, city engineering department has stormwater staff that will review the proposed stormwater plans, inspect the controls implemented, implemented by the developer during construction and following construction. Regarding the mandatory E A W requirements cited, city attorney has determined for the construction of the project with the projected number of attached units being less than one hundred fifty, we would not require an E A W, or it wouldn't be required by state law. The most up to date plan from the applicant contains one hundred forty-eight attached units. The developer is now proposing to construct two thirty-eight units apartments fronting North Highland Avenue as phase one of the project and two thirty-six unit apartments at the rear of the property as phase two of the project. There was concerns, many concerns about traffic, utility infrastructure, and public safety. That was echoed in many of the letters. The city engineer, public utilities engineer, and the public utility director have all reviewed the project proposals and its implementation, implement, implications on the city streets and utility systems. So first, let's go with streets. The city engineer has used the EPA mixed use trip generation model to estimate the amount of traffic to be generated from the site. That model estimates up to one thousand twenty-three trips per day with seventy-seven trips during the peak A M hour, ninety-nine trips during the peak P M hour. This model assumes that each unit will house up to two point five persons and have one point eight five vehicles per unit. When incorporating the additional traffic estimated to be generated, to be generated to the traffic study done by MINDOT in twenty twenty-one, we end up with a total number of traffic volume of four thousand five hundred sixty-six vehicles per day using this segment of North Highland Avenue. That amount of traffic is comparable to existing traffic today on North Garden Street between Fifth North Street and U S Highway fourteen. In addition, in two thousand and six North Highland Avenue improvements feasibility study, anticipated traffic volumes on North Highland Avenue between Seventh North Street and U S Highway fourteen to be four thousand six hundred seventy vehicles per day by twenty twenty-six. So what I'm seeing here is the anticipated traffic volumes to be generated because of this project are consistent with what we estimated in two thousand and six, all the way out to the year twenty twenty-six. City engineer has stated that after the completion of the project, traffic volumes and patterns will be monitored and considered, and consider future improvements as traffic patterns are established. Utilities. City engineer, public utilities engineer, and the public utilities director have reviewed the utility needs for gas, electric, water, wastewater, stormwater, and determine there is adequate capacity to serve the project of this size with the existing utility infrastructure already in place without any interruptions to existing neighborhoods in the area. There was concerns about parking and visual blight. The developer has proposed to locate the garages on the site on the perimeter to visually break up the taller apartments on the interior. The proposed apartments are forty feet, six inches in heights. Again, residents and single family homes can build their homes up to thirty-five feet in height. In the developer's general development plan, they stated that their buildings use, quote, broken facades, undulation, balconies, color, texture, and banding that serve to break down the scale of buildings so that they are more relatable to the human scale. The buildings will have traditional residential aesthetic that will relate to neighboring residential buildings. City zoning requirements specify that each unit is required to have two off-street parking stalls per unit. Developer has provided three hundred four parking stalls, both with surface lot parking and indoor garage parking. Parking stalls meet the minimum standard in the city's zoning ordinance of nine by twenty feet, and the driving lanes are designated twenty-six feet in width, our requirement is twenty-four feet. Both the stalls and the driving lanes meet the standards outlined in the city zoning ordinance. Dumpsters on the property will be located, will be located internally and properly screened as per city zoning regulations. There's concerns about property values and tax equity. So the city of New Ulm has worked with the Brown County Assessor's Office in review of increased property values or property values near multifamily buildings. Since twenty nineteen, property values for all residential properties has dramatically increased, and I think we're all aware of that. So we gathered sales data for residential properties directly adjacent to multifamily multifamily properties since twenty nineteen to today. That data shows that there are eleven sales of properties that met both the location criteria and the single family residence criteria. Of the eleven properties, eight sold for more than the estimated market value and three sold for less. One of the three, I would note, that was a foreclosure and a bank sale. So precedent and long-term consequences. The city relies on its comprehensive plan and zoning regulations for making decisions on all land use applications. In cases where the proposed land use may not directly line up with both the comprehensive plan and zoning ordinance, procedures in those documents are followed that involve public hearings, neighbor notifications for the proposed use. These procedures were developed based on state statute and also went through a public hearing process before being adopted by the city council of the city of New Ulm. We have followed those procedures outlined in the comprehensive plan and the zoning ordinance in review of this proposal. So there was, there was concerns that we don't have the proper utility infrastructure in the North Highland area to serve this type of project. So in two thousand and six, a feasibility study of North Highland Avenue was undertaken between Seventh North Street and U S Highway fourteen. This study was conducted before the reconstruction of the major arterial roadway in the community. The study considered four roadway options that were provided through previous, through a previous feasibility study that was conducted in nineteen ninety-nine. At that time, option two was selected and slated this section for North Highland Avenue to be a four lane parkway with no, no parking on either side of the street. However, in selecting this option, the city council acted to modify this typical section to a two lane roadway with parking allowed on both sides for the foreseeable future. When traffic volumes dictate a four lane roadway on North Highland Avenue, the parking would be removed and converted to vehicular use. So North Highland Avenue was designed to carry more vehicular traffic if deemed necessary. Public safety, traffic, public safety, and pedestrian cross crossings across North Highland Avenue. So we went through traffic volumes and estimates stated earlier. The city engineer has determined that if traffic volumes and movements dictated, traffic control measures and pedestrian crossings may be, may be improved if warranted, we will continue to monitor traffic volumes and movements in the North Highland Avenue area. There was also concern about noise pollution and car alarms. We noted that noise pollution, or noise from traffic and car alarms has a potential to increase in any residential development, not just a multifamily to residential development. Safety of kids playing in the street on the east side of North Highland Avenue, that was brought up in one of the letters. Staff anticipates traffic generated from the project site enter North Highland Avenue and either travel north or south on North Highland Avenue. There should be no need for this traffic to enter the neighbor, neighboring streets to the east of North Highland Avenue, and these streets all end up flowing to North Highland Avenue regardless. There was a comment that we should consider locating this project further to the north, just north of Twelfth North Street and the Walner gravel mining pit. So this area was considered by the developer, developer in the initial review of properties within the city. This location does not provide adequate space for the development, has topographical issues as you go to the east, and does not, and has future North Highland Park in the middle of the property. Additionally, the Walner pit may be further expanded in the future and continue mining to the south. Access to Seventh North Street was another item that was brought up, rather than having traffic go out to North Highland Avenue on Ninth and Tenth. So the developer has contemplated having tenant traffic use Seventh North Street as an additional access point or replacement access. City engineer preferred the site have vehicular traffic access North Highland Avenue directly rather than Seventh North, as both options put all the vehicular traffic back on North Highland Avenue. There's a question on whether or not there's enough provided play space on the property and in the development proposal. So the city does not have a requirement for a certain amount of play space for development of this type. What we do have is a requirement for five percent play space or open outdoor area for kids to play if we were to do a manufactured home park. Again, that's five percent. So if, let's just say we were to, this is hypothetical, let's just say we were to apply that to this type of project. It would require the developer to have twenty-two thousand square feet of open play space on the site. Based on our calculations, the developer has provided approximately fifty-five thousand nine hundred square feet of open or play space on the site, that is between the buildings on the interior of the property, not on boulevard areas, not in the areas between the buildings and the sidewalk or the buildings and the parking area. So that equates to roughly twelve point five percent of the site to be open space for recreational use or play area or sports courts. There was also a question that we had a low parkland dedication fee for this project. The city's requirement for the parkland dedication fees are one thousand fifty dollars per lot and three hundred fifty dollars per residential unit. So for parkland dedication fee for this project is fifty-six thousand dollars. So following that, staff does have a recommendation and would recommend approval of the application for the plan unit development and general development plan, and the reasons for this recommendation can be found in the attached findings of facts forms. We would recommend two conditions. One, that the applicant slash owner will pay the cost to record necessary documents with the Brown County Recorder's Office, and that two, that the Brown County Recorder's Office, and that two, that the establishment of the PUD will require the approval of the following documents. Resoning of the property by ordinance, B, development agreement, and C, final plan. We do have two potential motions, one to recommend approval of the application to the City Council and one to recommend denial. And that concludes the staff report.
Thank you. At this point, I would like to know if the developers first have something to say or if they'd like to hold off till, I have audience participation? Hold off? Thank you. Any questions from the commissioners?
I have a couple.
Okay, go.
John, would you identify for us that the several conditions or zoning standards for the R4 district are not being met by this proposal? Most of them are, so essentially it feels to me like an R4 apartment project, and there's only a couple of things that don't meet those standards, right?
The only thing that doesn't meet those standards is actually a standard that's applicable across all residential zoning districts, and that's to have a detached accessory structure in front of the permitted structure, which is typically the home.
So all the setbacks are now being met? Those were modified?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. The second question I've got is, is there a landscaping plan available we could take a look at?
I don't have it available with me today, and I think they're in the process of finalizing that, but we do have standards set forth in the city zoning ordinance. Typically, what we end up seeing is that landscaping plan coming with the development agreement and building permit process. There will be required to adhere to the city's landscaping plan requirements.
Well, the reason I ask is, since we're looking at an apartment project being on North Highland, and since it's a PUD, the city has the authority or flexibility to ask for landscaping to be enhanced, and I'm wondering if it's possible to do some of that enhancement along North Highland.
Certainly, we can certainly ask that of the developer. I would also note that the city's landscaping requirements are quite high, very high, and we do also allow some trade-off because we go by total plant units. So if they want, since the number of shrubs could be required to be in the thousands, they can trade some of that for things like trees, full-size trees, that could provide more screening on the site.
Okay. And I have just one more, if I may.
Oh, go ahead.
If I understand right, the rezoning itself is still pending approval by council, or maybe it has been approved?
Nope.
And hasn't been?
It's pending approval by council based on the recommendation of the.
Okay. Well, the question I've got is, on zoning maps, when you do a PUD, it shows up on a map as PUD, which means nothing to anybody except that we don't know what rules apply. Is it possible on that zoning map, when it is redone, to call this one, for example, an R4 PUD, since essentially that's what it is? And then when council members or planners or neighbors look at the map, they understand what they're looking at?
Yeah, I certainly think that's possible, since each one of these PUDs is individually reviewed and given a title, let's say, of a zoning district. So if the City Council would like that to be the title of this district, we certainly can write that in the ordinance that would change, rezone the property.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Got a couple of questions. One of them is, has city staff had any conversation with the school district and expansion? I think one of the letters kind of asked, you know, are we land-blocking the school for future growth?
Right, so.
Has there been conversation?
We've reached out to the school, and they have not responded, but we have also been in multiple meetings with this school superintendent, Mr. Kester, and he knows about this project proposal and has not provided any opposition towards this project. They also received both the letter of the comp plan, they received notice of the comprehensive plan amendment, along with the notice of the planning of development project, and has not provided any response to either of those.
Okay. My next question is, so this development here is about 10 acres. If that would be a single-family, for instance, how many homes would be on that area?
So in a low-density residential district, you could have 12 units per acre, okay? So this project is proposing 14.9 units per acre.
Does the commission have any other questions? If not, I'll open it up to the audience. Again, if you have a question, please step up to the microphone, state your name and
Or if they have anything else they'd like me to pull up on the screen, I can certainly do that as part of the planning commission package here.
Thank you. There must be a question. Then I'm going to, if there are no questions or comments, does the developer have anything they want to offer?
Thank you for your hearing, Ms.
Thank you. If not, I'm going to close the public hearing portion of the meeting and move on to the finding of facts.
Okay.
All right, public hearing portion of the meeting and the finding of facts is open. The portion is closed. We'll discuss the finding of facts. Has the commission had a chance to read and agree or disagree or have any questions about the proposed finding of facts that we received in the packet?
Madam Chair, I just have one. I know that the city engineer and planning staff have looked at all existing systems, including the road system. I just would like to hear some comments from John, if you would, on potential future development of the rest of the property. There are several access points that exist, one that's being provided, and really what I'm interested in knowing is making us feel comfortable that what's left of that property still is logically developable.
Right, and we have taken some preliminary looks at that. One logical extension of a roadway in the area would be Oak Street, and that would be to connect Oak Street to 7th. And then within that, we would probably have neighborhood streets, residential streets. But there's a number of different layouts that are being considered. Before any of those are decided upon or anything like that, it's going to be brought to the planning commission for their review and input on any proposals.
So again, I ask, has everyone read, or do we want to individually go through every question?
I think we should go through each question.
Okay. Are adequate property controls established and provided to protect the individual owner's rights and the property values and to define the legal responsibilities for maintenance and upkeep?
Staff responded, yes, there is only one property owner. Their name is Highland Apartments of New Ulm LLP. The entire property will be managed by Prairie Lakes Management LLC. This firm is directly affiliated with Keepers Incorporated.
Does the commission agree?
Yes.
Yes.
Is the project site adaptable to the PUD general development plan?
Staff responded, yes, the general development plan would facilitate the construction and operation of a market-rate multifamily housing project at 901 North Highland Avenue. Site plan for the project would include two 38-unit apartment buildings and two 36-unit apartment buildings with site amenities. Total number of dwelling units would equal 148. Each building would consist of a mix of studio, one and two-bedroom units. Project would also involve the construction of a segment of 10th North Street and west of North Highland Avenue. The total lot area less the street right-of-way is 384,199 square feet or 8.82 acres. This acreage amount could accommodate up to 192 dwelling units using the city's R4 lot area standards of 2,000 square feet per unit. The proposed project would be 40 less units than permitted by the R4 zoning district, and the project would be constructed in two equal phases.
And this is a yes answer? Does everyone agree?
Yes.
Thank you. Will the proposed PUD be detrimental to or endanger the public health, safety, comfort, or general welfare of the community?
Staff responded, no. The project involves the development of four apartment buildings, eight garage structures with 80 enclosed spaces and 224 surface parking spaces. A large shared green indoor, sorry, outdoor community space then includes a play area, sports court, grill areas, and a fenced dog park. These facilities are common to apartment complexes in many cities and are not known to cause any safety problems. As a result, the proposed project will not be detrimental or endanger the public health, safety, comfort, or general welfare of the community.
And again, do I ask, does the commission agree?
Yes.
Does the interior circulation plan and access from and onto public right-of-way address, excuse me, address congestion or dangers and be adequate for the safety of the project residents and general public?
Staff responded, yes, that the project will be constructed in two phases. A total of 76 units in two buildings will be built in phase one, and an additional 72 units in two buildings will be built in phase two. The only traffic generated for this project are vehicles associated with the dwelling units in these four buildings. The interior core of the property contains four apartment buildings, and those four buildings will be surrounded by a large interior green space. The buildings in turn will be surrounded by one or more rows of surface parking and an internal circular driving lane that provides access to those surface parking areas. On the exterior of the circular driving lane, there are eight garages. The driving lane will provide access to North Highland Avenue as an existing major collector street. A new street will be constructed as part of the project, and it will be the extension of 10th North Street. It will also intersect North Highland Avenue, and both the city's transit systems, the Brown County Heartland Express and Herman Express, will both have access to the apartment area. The proposed circulation system and parking arrangement is common with these types of apartment complexes. The location of these facilities will not be detrimental to or endanger the public health, safety, welfare, comfort, or, sorry, safety, comfort, or general welfare of the community. North Highland Avenue also has a lane width and capacity to absorb additional traffic generated by the project.
Does everyone agree with the findings?
Yes.
Thank you. Is there sufficient amount of usable open space provided?
Staff responded, yes, that the site plan shows open space between the four apartment buildings. As we stated earlier, there's roughly 55,900 square feet of open space in that area. Within that area, there is room for a large green space, separate play area, sports court, grill areas, and a fenced dog park. There are also two locations for smaller stormwater retention ponds. On the south side of the property, from North Highland Avenue to County State Aid Highway 27, abuts a 20-foot-wide alley lane that has not been constructed. This space has the opportunity to be used for a bike trail or walking trail at some future date. The right-of-way also provides access to Fender Park. This park has 6.6 acres and is close proximity to the apartment area. Additional biking and walking trails are possibilities for this park and the park area in the future. Park has not been developed, but as this area experiences additional residential development pressure, it may be necessary to proceed with these types of improvements. Project facilities will not unreasonably disrupt the privacy use, enjoyment, or enjoyment of the surrounding property owners or reduce the value of adjacent properties.
Is the commission in agreement?
Yes.
Thank you. Will the arrangement of the building structures and accessory uses unreasonably disturb the privacy use and enjoyment of surrounding property owners or reduce the value of adjacent properties?
Staff responded, no, that the project site has been designed so that all tenants will have access to shared outdoor community space that consists of a large central green space, play area, sports court, basketball and pickleball, grill areas, and a fenced dog park. This location will be the primary location for tenant activities. It's also possible that residents will use facilities located in Fender Park. It should be noted that the garages will also serve as a screening, serve as screening from the building and tenant recreational areas. Surrounding land uses and their distances from the edge of the apartment buildings or garages are as follows. So to the east, 165 feet, to the north, 110 feet, to the future setback line of any future development, 580 feet to the New Ulm High School property line, to the west, 147 feet to the property line, and then to the south, 135 feet. The distances between the building structures and accessory uses and those currently in existence are not unreasonable and will not disturb the privacy use and enjoyment of surrounding property owners or reduce the value of adjacent properties.
Is the commission in agreement?
Yes.
Thank you. Is the architectural design of the project compatible with the surrounding area?
Staff responded, yes, that the apartment building uses broken facades, undulation, decks and balconies, colors, texture, and banding that serve to break up the scale of the buildings so that they are more relatable to the human scale. The buildings will have a traditional residential aesthetic that will relate to neighboring residential buildings. The garages will have a rectangular shape and more limited landscaping. Portion of the building will have a brick facade and different colors.
Is the commission in agreement?
Yes.
Thank you. I'm going to make this larger. Is there adequate provisions for off-street parking and loading, pedestrian access, walks, lighting, landscaping, and other necessary facilities?
Staff responded, yes, that the applicant has provided off-street parking and loading that meet the requirements found in the city zoning ordinance. Total number of parking spaces required in the ordinance is two per unit for a total of 304 spaces. This is the total number of required stalls in the R4 zoning ordinance for high-density residential uses. Site plan shows a sidewalk system allowing both pedestrians to access all residential facilities with and within and outside the project area. Sidewalk system also provides access to parking, public sidewalk, and street locations. The applicant has also provided lighting and a landscaping plan that will be required by the city zoning ordinance.
In agreement?
Yes.
Will the project place a burden on existing municipal infrastructures, including utility and drainage systems?
The answer to that should be no. The existing utility system have sufficient capacity to serve this area of the community. Extension of 10th North Street will facilitate service to this general area. Utility systems would include water, sanitary sewer, storm sewer, gas, and electricity. The city also has two providers of telephone and internet service in the area.
Does the commission agree with a no answer?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Will the PUD general development plan schedule, ensure, a logical development of the site protecting the interests of project residents and general public use?
Staff responded, yes, that the applicant anticipates starting phase one construction on the project in the fall of 2025. This would be the two easternmost units facing North Highland Avenue. Construction is anticipated to be completed in the spring of 2027. Phase two would start in the summer of 2027 and would be completed by the fall of 2028.
Does the commission agree?
Yes.
Yes.
Is the PUD in compliance with the intent and purpose of the zoning ordinance adopted comprehensive and adopted comprehensive plan?
Staff responded, yes, the PUD is in compliance with the intent and purpose of the adopted zoning ordinance and the city's comprehensive plan.
Commission in agreement?
Yes.
With that said, I'm going to ask, are there any other questions from the commission for the city?
Just one comment that, like previously, I'm abstaining from anything on this property.
Thank you. I would entertain a motion. They're way back on page.
If I may, I will.
Okay.
I move to recommend approval with the conditions outlined by staff and a suggestion that zoning district call this an R4 PUD.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. When does this appear before the council?
This will go to the City Council on June 3rd at 4:30.
Thank you. I'm going to open the next public hearing. It's the PUD for River Haven Housing LLC, 1,800 North Highland Avenue and 1425 to 1625 Maplewood Drive.
Just give me a second here to get reorganized.
That's fine.
So this is a public hearing to consider the general development plan associated with the proposed planning development zoning district to accommodate a mixed-use residential housing project. The applicant for this project is River Haven Housing LLC. The property owner of this, of this site is City of New Ulm. The legal description for the property is part of the southeast quarter of the northeast quarter of Section twenty-four, Township one-ten North, Range thirty-one West. Street address for the property is eighteen hundred North Highland Avenue. The property is located east of North Highland Avenue and south of Maplewood Drive. Deadline for a decision on this application is July eleventh, twenty twenty-five. The comprehensive plan land use designation for the property is high-density residential. Surrounding land uses in the comprehensive plan designates the areas to the north, south, and east as low-density residential, and then to the west as parks, open space, and municipal airport. Zoning designation for the property is currently PUD Planning Unit Development Number One. Surrounding zoning to this property is R1 Single Family Residence District and R2 Single and Two Family Residence District. To the south, we have the Brown County A1, that's Agricultural District. To the east, R1, and the AOS Agricultural Open Space District. To the west, we again have Brown County A1, the city, R2, and AOS. Currently, the site is farmed or is fallow. Current area land uses include, to the north, single-family residences and twin homes; to the south, crop farming; to the east, undeveloped property and gravel mining; to the west, stormwater pond and crop farming and airport. Notice was provided to all property owners within three hundred fifty feet of the subject property and then published in the Journal on May seventeenth, twenty twenty-five. Staff has received phone calls from area resident concerned about the project. Those concerns included the following: one, the ability to sell individual lots with an apartment being constructed behind them; two, the individual single-family lots and twin home lots having enough space for adequate backyards; three, having enough parking for the development; four, removing trees on the northeast end of the project area for single-family homes; and then, sorry, number five, mowing and weed control on the site. Utilities are located in North Highland Avenue and the Am Maplewood Drive. The developer proposes to connect two utilities installed in Maplewood Drive for the single-family and twin homes. The city engineer has requested that the developer install all utilities from Maplewood Drive into the single-family and twin home lots at one time. Utilities serving the apartments and townhomes will be provided from North Highland Avenue. The site is served by city storm sewer. The applicant will provide some onsite stormwater treatment as required on Lot seventeen for the apartments and townhomes. The project site will be fully served by the city and public utility systems. So traffic accessing the apartments and townhomes will enter the property from North Highland Avenue. Traffic entering the twin and single-family home lots will enter from properties, enter the properties from Maplewood Drive. So this, the right-of-way, the property is located adjacent to North Highland Avenue to the west, Maplewood Avenue to the north, and undeveloped Ryan Road to the east. North Highland Avenue was designated as a major collector street, and Maplewood Avenue was designated as a local residential street. Comprehensive plan does not designate a park within this platted area. So summary of the project here. For purposes of evaluating this project, staff again use the standards assigned to the R4, that's the high-density residential zoning district. The subject property has a total of, a total area of seven point six acres. Approximately six of those acres on the site are being farmed currently, and one point six one acres was formerly mined and is not in active use. The project consists of seventeen building lots in the approved River Haven Edition plat. Lots one through ten, I'm going to pull this up on a map so we all can visualize this. Sorry about that. Okay, I'll get there. So lots one through ten, here, here, those would be developed as twin, twin home lots. Lots eleven through sixteen would be developed as single-family home lots. Let me get back here. And then, the two apartment buildings, as seen on the site plan, would be here and here, and the proposed townhomes would be here, back in the, let's call it, the south and east corner of the property. The project is proposed for the following number of dwelling units. In the two apartment buildings, forty-eight units per building totaling ninety-six dwelling units. So in total, the two apartment buildings will include eight studio, fifty-six one-bedroom, and thirty-two two-bedroom units. In the townhomes, again, to the south and east, would be one-row home consisting of six dwelling units. Twin homes would be five buildings, a total of ten dwelling units. And then, single-family homes would, of course, be six individual dwelling units. So the total number of dwelling units proposed on the site would be a hundred eighteen. The developer is proposing to construct the two forty-eight-unit apartments as the first phase of the project, and the townhomes as phase two of the project. Both the apartments and townhomes will be owned and operated by the, by the developer. The developer estimates that site grading could start in the summer or fall of twenty twenty-five, with the potential for construction to start in the fall or winter of twenty twenty-five. The developer is proposing to sell the twin home lots and single-family home lots to area developers or individuals. The development schedule for these homes is unknown and will be subject to the market demand. There will be four different types of housing units on the property: apartments, townhomes, single-family homes, and twin homes. Each housing type will have its own architectural style. So previous approval. In two thousand and twenty-two, the city council approved the plan unit development project for this site. At that time, the project consisted of the same number of dwelling units, housing types, and configuration, but all of the units in that proposal were to be owned by the developer and then rented out. Staff believed that the change in plans to now sell the single-family and twin home lots warranted another public hearing. In addition, the PUD and development agreement that the project was to start with, state that the project was to start within two years of approval, and that timeline has now passed. Outline, we have the approval process. I went through that in the previous planning unit development process, sorry, application. I, I'd care not to read through that. Again, it's the exact same process. Documents to be approved and secured by the plan unit development zoning designation, a general development plan that's currently under consideration by the planning commission, an ordinance approving the PUD designation that's pending, development agreement that's pending, and then final plat, so filing of that plat is pending. Let me scroll back up so the audience can see. So exceptions to the R4 High Density Residential and the R2 Two Family Residence District ordinance standards for this project. So the minimum lot widths in our R2 zoning district for a twin home would be sixty feet. The applicant is proposing lot widths of sixty-two point five seven feet, ranging all the way up to eighty-two point five seven, five seven feet, so they meet that minimum lot width criteria. Single-family home lots requirement is a sixty-five-foot lot width. Developer is proposing a range from fifty-four point nine four to sixty-nine point one three, so they do not meet that width requirement. Minimum lot area for a twin home in our standards is seven thousand five hundred square feet. The developer is proposing six thousand seven hundred eighty-nine to eight thousand nine hundred sixty-one square feet. So there are a few of the lots that do not meet that standard. Single-family home requirements in the R1 district would be nine thousand square feet per residence, and they're proposing a range between six thousand seven hundred ninety-eight to nine thousand seven hundred ninety-seven. Minimum lot depth for a twin home is one hundred twenty-five feet. The developer is proposing lot depths of one oh seven to one oh eight. Single-family homes, minimum lot depth is one twenty-five, and the developer is proposing one oh two to one twenty-two. I would note that if you go, go directly across the street, and the twin homes that are already developed across Maplewood Avenue, the two lots on the far, let's call it, let's call it the east end of the twin homes, also received a variance back in two thousand and seven to shorten the length or the depth of those lots, the shortest one being a lot depth of one hundred feet. Similar, similar to what's here. Maximum building coverage for twin homes on a property is thirty-five percent. The applicant's proposing twenty, twenty-four percent lock coverage, so they're under that maximum building coverage number. Same with single-family, which the requirement is thirty-five percent, and the developer is proposing twenty-four percent. Again, that's under the maximum amount allowed. Parking stalls required for this type of development, again, is two stalls per residential unit, so they'd have to have two hundred thirty-six stalls. The developer is proposing to have two hundred thirty-six stalls on the site, so they meet that requirement. Mixed-use residential housing, so the city doesn't allow different types of mixed-use residential housing to take place. Typically, those are separated, and the developer is proposing mixed-use residential housing. That also is the reason why we're going through the planning, one of the reasons why we're going through the planning unit development process. So the maximum height of the allowance for an apartment like this would be forty-five feet, the developer is proposing forty-five feet one inch. I would note, that has been a change from the previous proposal, which at that time, the developer was proposing a maximum height of fifty feet ten inches, so they lowered the height by five feet nine inches. Attached, we have the planning unit development application, the general development plan, site location map, and zoning district map, and I'll just go through a few of those. So, let me get there. Here's the proposed, here's the renderings provided by, by the developer, showing what the inside of the apartment, apartments could look like, rendering of the outside of the apartment building, some renderings of single-family homes. Here's the site plan they provided. Again, I would note that the site plan hasn't changed from what was originally approved by the city council in, in two thousand and twenty-two. The main change we have here are both the laps in time before a shovel was put in the ground for development or a building permit was pulled, and again, the change in selling those single and twin home lots, rather than keeping them under one common ownership and renting them out. Here is the location of the subject property in red. Here is the, the subject property and the surrounding zoning. Here's a closer-up view of the site. Here's the comprehensive plan use, showing the different land uses designated around the site. Here's a number of photos, so this is from, taken from North Highland Avenue facing southeast. This is from Maplewood Drive facing mostly west. And for perspective here, what they're proposing for the twin homes and the single-family homes, this is kind of the brake line. So those single-family homes would start roughly in this area and continue to go east. The twin homes would be roughly in this area and then continue out towards North Highland Avenue. The proposed apartments would be constructed on top here, and then to the south and east would be the proposed six townhomes. This is a shot, taking a look directly at the lots that would be single-family. Here is a photo from North Highland Avenue, looking directly to the east, and showing where the apartment buildings would be constructed in that area. And then we have the findings of fact. So that would conclude the staff report.
One of the questions that came up last time and is coming up, I see again this time, is the trees that are on that one corner. Now, if I recall correctly, that was addressed because that was going to, there were going to be more trees planted than were in that existing, is that still applicable?
Yes, they'd be required to sit, to meet the city's landscape requirements, and there would be many more trees than will be lost there. Now, if the developer would consider saving some of the trees on the site, because they're older trees or mature trees, we would certainly, we would certainly recommend doing that.
Okay.
That is the area where the single-family residential homes could be, so there is the possibility that they could save the trees in the backyard, to some degree.
The other question that I have is Ryan Road.
Right.
Is that still not going to be developed, that it's going to stop where it exists, but future plans do at some point call for that extension?
With this proposed project, the extension of Ryan Road is not part of the plans. There's still some decisions, decisions that need to be made by the, the owners of the Walner Pit, and how we're going to meet elevations to match up the road to get it at the right elevation to service that area.
And all accesses except for the twin homes along Maplewood Drive were all filtered out onto Highland? Is that still correct?
Correct. So the apartments and the townhomes would enter and exit onto North Highland Avenue. The single-family homes and the twin homes would enter onto Maplewood Drive.
Okay. That was my question.
I'll just follow up on that. If Ryan Road is not going to be extended at this point, is the only access to the townhome building through the parking lot of the apartment building?
Yes.
What do you use for an address? How do normal people find that?
Right, so we, we had reviewed all of that with the U.S. Postal Service and EMS, when we were initially going through this process in two thousand and twenty-two. And the conclusion they come up, they came up to, is it would be apartment, whatever the, the address, apartment A, apartment B, and then you have a number.
Okay.
And then the same would go for, it would be unit one, two, three, four, five, six in the townhomes.
Okay.
Are there any other questions from the commission? I'm opening this up to the audience. Does the audience have any comments or questions or statements they wish to make? Please state your name and address. Thank you.
Paulo Peglieri, eighteen twenty-eight Henry Drive. First, I'd like to say I'm not against the development of the housing. I think it's a great opportunity for the city. I love to see New Ulm have thirty thousand people, so I don't have to drive my wife to Mankato to go shopping. So I do appreciate the development. However, when we built our home, we built on the assumption that we were building a neighborhood of low-density homes, and that's what we, we did, and that's what we support. We don't want that, that housing to be changed now to high-density. And I saw that John showed some pricing on house property. I do think that some of those older properties, it's okay, you might not lose value, but now you have homes there that are selling for half a million dollars, and I would never buy a home for half a million dollars that is on a high-density populated neighborhood. And I don't think anybody here would. So I don't think, I think it's a great opportunity for the town to have those developments, but I think there is zoning, a neighborhood that has been built on a trust that the city would maintain that world and keep that development as what it was, it's the strength of our town, and it's what our neighborhood wants. It wants to have the confidence that the city is going to support us, so that we can invest in the city. And I think there are other areas, there is behind runnings, there is that big open lot there by the rental units, why isn't this proposed to be there? There's a lot of other rental units in the same region. There's a lot of other rental units in that same region. And going down 29 County there, County Road 29, there's a bunch of area that is open, which would probably be a better fit for this type of development. So I don't want to take up a lot of time, but I think that I am supporting of the housing development, but not of the rezoning of our neighborhood.
Thank you.
Thank you.
John, do you have anything to address those concerns?
Well, I appreciate, I appreciate the comments. This is similar to, something that's been similarly brought up when we went through the public hearing process, to change the land use designation, and also, the first time we went through the process of the planning unit development or rezoning of the property. So I appreciate, and it's clear that the neighborhood still has those similar concerns. Couple things about the area behind runnings, and I, anytime a developer comes into town, we show them that site, that, that property owner is not interested in selling that property. Out on County Road 29, and I appreciate that comment too, because that's, that makes a lot of sense, that, that area, there's parts of that area that are outside the city limits. And when we recently went through the orderly annexation agreement with Milford Township, one of the property owners out there specifically wanted to be not included in that orderly annexation agreement, and it's unlikely that area will be developed into the future, or at least come into the city of New Ulm. So I just want to point out those two things.
Thank you.
John, what, it's sort of water over the dam at this point, but what was the land use designation of the comp plan before it was amended?
It was low-density residential.
So that's what the comment was referencing, that's, when they bought, they bought with that vision. Okay.
John, could you touch base maybe, so, the acreage here, if that was all single-family dwelling, how many homes we would have? Do you have a?
I could do the math quick here.
You know, to that, you know, or are we over or under?
Boy, I'm gonna have to do the math here real quick, give me a second. So they're allowed 12 units per acre.
We have just about 8 acres.
They'd be allowed 90, roughly 96.
96, so we're at 118.
Yep.
Okay.
Are there any other audience members that wish to comment?
John, I don't want to.
Please step up to the microphone.
In regards to the pricing, Paulo Peglieri, 1828 Henley Drive, in regards to the pricing of the other properties that you assessed, like the 11 you assessed, and 8 sold for whatever the market was, and 3 were under, do you have an idea what the price of those homes were, and then how old were they? So that, just so we have a fair comparison to what's going to happen to our pricing?
Sure, so I have, if, if you would like, I could certainly share those with you. We were, we were basing it off of, we don't have any new multifamily housing where new homes have been built next to that.
John, can you get a little?
For a very, for a very long time.
That's the point, they're all older homes, they're already not as high-priced, where else?
They were quite high-priced. And if you don't, give me a second here. They're not in that $500,000 range, but here, so.
Yeah, so they're relatively high, but like you said, they're not where our neighborhood is right now. Because right now, market, for, for tax purposes, my home, for example, is above 400. To sell the house would be at least a half a million, and there's no way I would pay, or anyone in here would pay a half a million dollars living near an apartment.
Name and address, please.
My name is Jim Skolinski. I live at 1612 Maplewood Drive. When my wife and I bought that property, we specifically asked the developer what was going to be across the street from us, and we were assured it was going to be residential twin homes, same-style housing that we have. This is changing all that. It's definitely going to affect the value of our property. I have a question for John. Has an EAW been done?
So this is under that 150, 150 attached unit threshold, so mandatory EAW wouldn't be required for the site.
How about an EIS?
Environmental Impact Study?
Yes.
Nope, hasn't been done for the site.
So, I request that that be done on this site. Environmental Impact Study.
What, sorry, excuse me, could you tell me what he specifically would like to know? Is it a stormwater issue or a wetland issue?
All the issues that pertain to building on the, the property that you're proposing. If you could go back to the slide where the standards of the lots and all the no's, the lot sizes aren't the right size, many things that have, that are no's on, on that sheet. So, I'm wondering why we're proposing to build something when it doesn't meet the codes.
I think you went too far.
Right there. The lot sizes aren't big enough, they're not wide enough, they're not deep enough. This one, mixed residential housing, not permitted. We're proposing to permit it. Maximum height, 45 feet. We're saying that the apartment building can be 45 feet, 1 inch. The general view of our neighborhood, and we're a very tight neighborhood, is we don't need, the elevation of the property across the street from us goes up, so on top of that, you're going to build a four-story building towering over us. I live across the street, anybody that, they're going to sell these twin-home lots in, on Maplewood, number one, their lot is narrow, and it's not very deep, and the parking lot is going to be right up to the back of their property. They're not going to have, how much backyard do they say they're going to have? Not much. So, who are you going to sell those lots to? Who's going to develop that? It's undesirable. It's going to be, like I say, the airport, is the airport signed off on this project? I mean, the FFA, FAA?
Yes.
It just seems odd that just a block away on Henley, they made the city take down the streetlights because it interfered with the airport. But now we're going to build a block away from that, a four-story building. It, that, to me, that doesn't make any sense. Green space? If you look at the picture or the description, I don't see any green space for this apartment building. All I see is parking lot. I see a building and a huge parking lot. John assured me that there was 204, I believe, over 200 parking spaces. And the, the picture that they show us is a great picture of a nice building with what, five, six cars around it? I mean, I'd like to see a rendition, rendition of a picture with 100 cars in that parking lot. And what do they do when we get 5 inches of snow? Where are those people going to go? I've asked all along, a developer, somebody developed the property, to build one with garages, you know, make it three stories with garages, or, my, my dream would be, build a garden terrace across the street from us. Use the whole property that you've, you've purchased and develop, develop it into a garden terrace where, when I get old enough, I can't take care of my lawn, I can move across the street and have a garage, you know. We're in Minnesota, nobody wants to leave their car outside, so, I guess, our third word rep is not here. I, I was hoping some support from him, he's not here. So, I guess I invite anybody on the council to come to my address, 1612 Maplewood, and sit in my driveway and look at what I'm going to see. I'm okay with twin homes across the street, but that is not going to block a four-story building, sitting on top of a hill, because it's on top of a hill where they're projecting to build it. It just seems like this is such a, what do I want to call it? I'll use good words, they're trying to put 10 pound, 10 pounds of sugar in a 5-pound bag. This is a very small piece of property, seven acres, and they're trying to squeeze this big apartment building on there, and it, it's going to be an ISO, it's going to be all parking lot. That's what I have to say. Thank you.
Do you want to address the issue of green space? Can you go back to the slide with the green space?
This, this slide? Okay.
That's fine.
So the, the green space shown on this site would include green space just along here, south property line, boulevard, just inside the property line here in the middle, corners of the buildings are here, and then back behind the row homes.
Thank you. Did you have something to say? Please step up, state your name and address.
Hi, Mary Henley, representing New Ulm Real Estate, 1227 North Broadway in New Ulm. I just have a few comments that, you know, people are approaching us because they are definitely concerned with their property values. If this would be the case, then this would go ahead. The way the land is architecturally, or it, it is quite higher than it is going to be like looking down, so was wondering if there's going to be anything there to level that out. The other thing that's come up is with both apartments, and thank goodness we're getting some market-rate apartments, so again, the city, my.
This is workforce rate, is it, is not workforce, non-market rate? Okay, thank you.
Just, we're so blessed and thankful that we're getting some market-rate housing, so thank you for that. That, it seems like your apartment building, the first one, and this one, they're having almost different requirements, your green space, different things, so people have brought that up, and also the, the traffic. So with the, both of them, with the Highland, and then the students driving, that they're very worried about accidents and pedestrian things. The other thing, just as a, a real estate agent, I think the city, that if you're owning the lots with the parking lot directly behind, and they're smaller, it will have to be definitely a developer that's thinking outside the box, because if it has one garage stall, again, you're limiting quite a few people right there that may want and need more than that. I mean, we're kind of, it's kind of functionally obsolescence, but even now in New Ulm, triple garages are getting to be that, people just seem to want more of that, so, so those are the things I had to say. Thank you.
John, would you address the traffic and the speed again? It's, it seems to be a recurring issue, and that's a study that will be done after the development, it will be reassessed after the development, is traffic pattern?
Yeah, I mean, the, the city engineer and always takes a look at traffic patterns as development increases within the community, because they need to take into account those extra vehicles that could be in a neighborhood or traveling along North Highland Avenue. North Highland Avenue in this segment, basically between the roundabout and U.S. Highway 14, is substantially lower in volume, to the amount of roughly 300, sorry, 3,000 less vehicles per day. But a full traffic study will be, be done by the Department of Transportation, we anticipate in 20, sorry, 2026. So they're going to reassess this segment of North Highland Avenue to get a more current number, because the last time a traffic study was done up here by MINDOT was 2021.
Okay. What about the height of the apartment as far as land? Is that going to be shaved down to be level, or is it going to remain elevated?
Yeah, the, the developer is proposing to grade that site down. I, I don't think we have a final grading plan that says what, how, how much lower, or if it's going to be lower than the existing elevation.
And again, there is screening to, to take place, that would screen a lot of the apartment buildings also, correct?
Well, there, there would be screening provided on the, sorry, on the backside of the twin and single-family home lots between those and the apartments.
State your name and address, please.
Robert Wise, 1624 Maplewood Drive. I live just about right there.
Okay.
On that corner, and I don't, I'm not, I, I am not.
Could you step a little closer to the microphone, please?
I'm not as, in favor of, of, as, as Paulo is, of having, having a town of 30,000 people, so, I'm from Gibbon. So, I'm used to 854 people. But anyway, so, so the apartment buildings and stuff don't really excite me too much, although I see the need for them, because I was a banker my whole life, and I understand housing needs and things like that. But I would like to point out, I guess, a couple things that you have asked questions Those are the twin homes, and they're going to have probably, I don't know, maybe 30, 20, 30 feet of backs, backyard space, and they're going to be right up to the line of the property, and I don't see any plan that puts any screening between them and the, the apartment and the parking and stuff. That, that is on a ridge, that's, the ridge is probably the equivalent of two more stories. So it's like, if you're looking at it from my place or Jim's place, you're looking at, not a four-story building, you're looking at a six-story building, the equivalent of, if they don't bring that down at, at some point. The other thing I wanted to address was the traffic, I'm not concerned about the traffic, we're used to the traffic on North Highland. But since they made Maplewood a through street, which it didn't, didn't used to be, it has increased the traffic on there quite a bit. A lot of it's school traffic, kids going to and from school, probably not with the best driving habits that you can imagine. We have as much or more dump truck traffic on that street than we had before. I don't know how that street will, will put up with that, as long as that pit is open and they're still using that street, that. And as an example of a safety issue and our concerns is, you know, many of us are senior citizens on, on that street. We already have one that is backing into her driveway and into her garage, so that when she comes out, she can come out forward-facing and see the traffic and see what's going on in order to, to actually get onto Maplewood. So, those are some of the issues we're talking about when it comes to traffic safety. We, it's not North Highland, it's Maplewood that we're worried about, so, thank you.
Thank you. Has any engineering study been done in relationship to this? You know, we've talked about traffic on North Highland, has Maplewood come up?
About the increased traffic volume, the city engineer has not indicated that he has reviewed that for substantial increases of traffic volume. Again, though, we're talking about 10, 10 units for twin homes, and we're talking about 6 units for single-family homes. We're not talking about the apartment complex, not that they couldn't use Maplewood Drive, but they are all exiting onto. but they are all exiting onto North Highland Avenue.
You make, step to the microphone, please. State your name and address.
Craig Opal, 1827 Henley. So I'm right on the corner, right here. The question I have is with the town, I have no big objections to this, just trying to figure out, right across the street from us, where, how much, how far back will those houses start, based on the drawing there? Because it is, if you stand at our house on the sidewalk, there's a grade that goes up there. That whole thing is almost a 30-foot-tall grade. How are they going to get, to get enough depth for a house? How are they going to do that? And then if they do, aren't they going to have 20-foot, because these are going to be butt right up to that back, aren't you going to have a 20-foot drop?
I need you to speak to the microphone, please. Thank you.
Wendy, do you want to talk about the grading plan?
State your name and address, please.
Wendy Anderson, excuse me. So as far as the addressing Marys think, there's two stall garages. It's just a photo that they sent over. Showed one cut off. As far as the grading plan, I know they have to take a lot of dirt off the site, grade it down according to the civil plans.
Okay.
As far as, we don't have landscaping plan. There'll be trees and things planted to, to break. And the purpose was to reflect maple, cross maple, do twins, reflect singles.
Okay, thank you. Please step up to the microphone. Name and address, please.
Elver Neber, 1604 Maplewood.
Thank you.
I have one objection to this, the lot size. I'm the recipient of the pie on the end. There's not enough room in the back for anybody. That was not my problem when I moved there. But as I see it going forward, why isn't somebody allocated enough space to play or have a garden or anything like that in the back? And if, or do you know what the grade is going to be taken down?
I'd have to, I'd have to review, sorry. I'd have to take a look at any final grading plans that would be submitted. And we could certainly share those with the planning commissioner or the city council when we have those.
Right, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to address the? State your name and address, please.
Hello, Michael, I live in 1900 Henley. I also have the same objection that Mr. Palero did about changing the zone from the one, which is what it was when we built the houses. Also, I don't think that traffic considerations have been adequately considered. We should have all these people going somewhere like school, for example, instead of a lot, sort of always at the same time. Same plans with work shift, all those things like that. I think no consideration has been given to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that?
Can I speak again?
Yes, please. Yes, please. I'm assuming, Jim, that you're speaking for a group.
I am.
Thank you.
One of the things that bothered me about this project is the city sent out this letter on the 16th. It was a Friday, so none of us got it until the following Monday. And then we have Memorial Day in here. So I myself have not really had a lot of time to prepare for something like this, and I'm sure a lot of us here have not had time to prepare. So I'd like that also be, to be considered that they don't decide on this project as a go-ahead. And I would really like to see the city do an EIS on this property to evaluate it before you make a decision. All right?
Thank you. Is an EIS?
I have 10 seconds. Just something on record. I have a 10-kilowatt PV system in my house, and I want it to be known that if they're shading from the property that minimizes my output on that solar panel, I would like to be monetarily compensated for their loss due to this apartment being built there. You know, if it's shading on my solar panels, I'm not producing any electricity, especially in the winter months. And if I'm not being, if I'm not getting that production, then who is going to pay for my loss and income due to that shading? Thank you.
Craig Opal, 1827 Henley. As a follow-up, as they say in court, on the grading. It seems like one of the big questions that everybody has is the grading here because if you look straight from our house, if you go toward Highland, it's lower. But if you try to put a house in right across from us, I don't care about a house there, and just a house, you're going to have to dig out, you know, 20, 30 feet, and that's the depth of the whole rest of the property back there. And I don't know that we've, it sounds like we haven't heard a real answer of how are they going to do that? And how far back do they have to dig? Because if you go, if you ever drive by there, where they mow, beginning open part of it is only half of that before you're starting to go, when you get down towards our place, only half of that to get up to a 20-foot grade. And that gets you up to the top of the property, and that also gets you to the level that the apartment will be on. Which, I just don't know how you're going to get, how they, they must have a gigantic wall or something back there. So it's about grade.
Wendy, do you want to address the grade again, please?
So this plan has been looked over and produced by Bolton Meek to hit all the city stuff with all the city meetings with the engineers. So I note that there's quite a bit of dirt that has to be moved. I can't tell you how much, but it did reduce the height. So there'll be height difference.
So there is grading, a great deal of grading plan?
There's a lot of dirt that Bolton Meek has us moving.
Okay. Do I have any other questions, comments, concerns? Does the developer have anything that they wish to address besides grading? Are there any questions from the commission now that we've heard from the public?
Madam Chair, John, I've got a couple of procedural questions. The first is, has the approval for the original PUD sunsetted? It has not, has it? Only the development agreement?
No, the approval for the PUD, in order for that to have continued, the project would have needed to have been constructed within two years of the approval date by the city council, and that time period has lapsed.
Okay. And then two others. Is there some reason why we don't, at this level for the public hearing, get a landscaping plan and a grading plan? They can be preliminary, but it would be nice if we could see some of this.
Sure. So that's typically what the city has done is we receive those along with the building, with the building construction plan. So that hasn't been a practice in the past. But if the planning commission warrants it or would like to see that in the future, that's something we certainly could provide.
Speaking for myself, I absolutely would. I mean, and I think the public has a right to see it too at the public hearing.
Are we going to address that in the next off-site meeting?
Yeah, sure.
Is that acceptable? Okay. Anyone else have any questions?
John, would it be possible that we tabled this to ask for that, you know, topography plan, you know, for the site elevation and then the study that he was looking for for the environmental needs? And bring that back at the next planning commission meeting?
So the city attorney's on the line, too. So if he can correct me if I'm wrong here, but there are three options the planning commission has at their disposal. One is to recommend approval to the city council, recommend denial, or to table this to come back to the next meeting in June.
John, it could be a state statute that's changed since I practiced, because I'm sure it has. But do we still have the option to extend the deadline for deciding by 60 days? Or does that require developers' consent?
Robert, would you mind helping me with that question?
Not at all, thank you, commissioners.
We would have to have it.
There is still the option under the 60-day rule for the city if it needs more time to consider an application to unilaterally extend the time period to consider the application by another 60 days. It just has to be communicated in writing prior to the expiration of the original 60 days.
Good. So not speaking for everybody else, but for myself, I think that grading is such a critical issue that I would like to recommend tabling this. I actually moved to table this until we were able to get a grading plan and a landscaping plan.
Would we like to include maybe the environmental study?
That's a different thing. An environmental impact statement is something that you can't take care of in 60 days.
Okay.
It was, your motion was to cover?
To table until we are able to look at and review as a commission, a grading plan and a landscaping plan.
And that extension is with, for 60 days?
Well, I'm not, if we have the time to extend, then I would have staff formally extend that. I simply would say that we should table this until we have the information we need to make a good decision.
And just to clarify, too, is that we're making the recommendation, this would go, this tabling would go to the city council for approval, correct?
Well, it doesn't leave this body if we table it.
Okay, thank you.
I have a motion on the floor. Are there any questions, or is there a second to the motion?
I would second that motion.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on tabling this? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion has been tabled. Closes the public hearing portion of the River Haven Development Housing LLC. I'm going to open a public hearing on the PUD, the Plan Unit Development for Land Haven Development LLC, 2211 Jacob Street.
Okay. All right. Let me get things organized.
Yes, it is.
Does anybody on the planning commission need to take a short break? Or are we good to go?
I'm still good.
I'm good.
You're the one doing all the reading. Thank you.
Okay. So this next item on the agenda is to consider the general development plan associated with the Plan Unit Development Zoning District to accommodate a mixed-use storage facility.
Can I have a quiet in the audience, please? Thank you.
So the applicant for this project is Anthony Golden on behalf of Land Haven Development LLC. The property owner of this site is the city of New Ulm. The legal description for the property currently is Lot 1, Block 1, Airport Industrial Third Edition. It's proposed to be lots 1 through 29, Block 1, Outlet A and Outlet B of the Land Haven Edition. The street address is 2211 Jacob Street. The property location is west of Jacob Street and east of Walmart. Deadline for a decision on this application is July 8, 2025. And the land use designation in the city's comprehensive plan for this property is industrial. Surrounding land uses in the comprehensive plan, to the north, east, are both industrial. To the south, it's commercial. And then to the west, it's industrial and parks and open space. Currently, the property is zoned I-1. That's the planned industrial district. It's proposed to be PUD, that's Plan Unit Development. Surrounding zoning of the property to the north is the Brown County I-1 Industrial District. To the east, it's I-1. To the south, it's B-2, the General Business District. To the west, it's the Brown County I-1 Industrial District again. Currently, the site is farmed. Current area land uses include crop farming to the north, crop farming and industry to the east. To the south, we have Walmart and the airport. And then to the west, we have crop farming and Menards. Notice was provided to all property owners within 350 feet of the subject property and published in the journal on May 17, 2025. To date, staff has not received any public comment on this proposal. Utilities are located in Jacob Street and Barren's Boulevard. The developer intends to connect utilities installed in Jacob Street. Private utilities will be installed in a privately developed roadway or easement areas within the project area. The site is served by the city's storm sewer system. The applicant will also provide some onsite stormwater treatment in Outlet A and B because of the development size. The project will be fully served by the city's PUC, city and PUC utility systems. The project will have direct access to Jacob Street, Sopson and Sopson Street and Barren's Boulevard will serve as a secondary means of access to and from the site. Jacob Street also connects directly to US Highway 14. As this area develops in the future, other streets will be constructed to serve this property and others in the area. The city engineer has reviewed the project site plan and anticipated traffic volumes from the project and concluded that Jacob Street will be able to accommodate the additional traffic generated from the project. Lot 29 will serve as a private street. The street is U-shaped with the exception of a small extension on its north-south leg. City has found that the street to, the city has found that the street adequately provides access, necessary access to the lots within the project area. The east side of the property abuts Jacob Street. Jacob Street was designed to accommodate industrial traffic and eventually, and eventually, traffic through this area. All roads within the project area will be privately owned and managed by the applicant and eventually by an association. The comprehensive plan does not designate a park area within the platted area. So for the purpose of evaluating this project, staff has used the development standards assigned to the I-1 Planned Industrial District. The proposed project would involve plating, the plating of 28 lots and one lot designated for a private U-shaped street and two outlots for stormwater retention purposes. 28 of the lots would be established for a barn dominium style of building with units with gas, electric, water, and sewer services. Six lots would be established for storage condominiums with only gas and electric. Sorry, that was, I misread. It should be 22 lots for barn dominiums, six lots for storage only, my apologies. An association will manage the entire project area. Association documents, also known as governing documents, are legally binding rules that govern the association. These documents define the rules and regulations for the community and outlined the rights and responsibilities of the property owners. They will establish a framework for the community management, decision-making, and dispute resolution within the, within the property. The association documents will further describe the style, color, size, and buildings constructed on the property along with utility and maintenance responsibilities. Property owners that reside within this area will be advised that their association property abuts industrial and commercial land uses. As a result, they may be subject to dust, traffic, noise, vibration, refuse, garbage, glare, odors, and smoke generated by area properties. These nuisances are not normally found within residential areas. The storage condominiums would be constructed for personal... The storage condominiums would be constructed for personal property storage and use on an individual basis. The barn dominiums could be constructed with an internal residential dwelling unit that cannot exceed... That would not exceed 50% of the building footprint. The remainder of the building will have an open house... Open floor plan. The building would be steel-sided and have the same colors as the storage condos. Storage condos are permitted use in the I-1 zoning district. Barn dominiums are not a permitted use. So, again, the PUD approval process is outlined in the staff report. Documents to be provided to secure Plan Unit Development designation include the general development plan, which is what we're considering tonight, ordinance approving the PUD designation, development agreement, and preliminary plat. Preliminary plat will be considered by the Planning Commission at tonight's meeting. So, exceptions to the I-1 Industrial District ordinance standards. So, in the I-1 district, our minimum lot width for a lot is 100 feet. The developer is proposing 60 feet. So, it does not comply with the minimum lot width requirement. Minimum lot area in the I-1 Planned Industrial District is 20,000 square feet, and the developer is proposing a range of 6,600 to 18,126 square feet. So, that is less than the minimum lot area requirement. Parking stalls, they're proposing one stall per storage building and two stalls... Or, sorry, the ordinance requires one stall per storage building and two stalls per residents. A minimum of two stalls per lot for the barn dominiums and one stall per storage unit is being provided. So, they do meet that requirement. The required yard setbacks in the I-1 would be 30 feet in the front yard, 15 feet in the interior side yard, and then 25 feet in the rear yard. The developer is proposing a front yard setback of 20 feet, interior side yard of 10 feet, a rear yard of 15 feet. So, it doesn't meet those yard requirements. Maximum building height in that zoning district is 45 feet, and these buildings will not exceed that height. Maximum building coverage in the I-1 is 50%. This project is proposing the buildings not to exceed 50% of the lot... Total lot area. So, again, residential uses aren't permitted in the I-1 zoning district, and they're proposing to have up to 28 residential units. So, the amount of residential space within a storage building, also, this is in the residential zoning districts, you're not allowed to have... You're not allowed to have more than 50% of the total area of the building or footprint of the building to be garage space if it's a residence. In this case, the garage space will exceed the stor... Sorry. The garage space will exceed the residential living quarters within the building. We have a number of attachments, the PUD application, general development plan, site location map. I'm going to go through a few of those things. One thing I would note, that the I-1 Planned Industrial zoning standards were set forth with the... Or designed with the idea that we were going to develop these much larger lots for single industrial purposes. So, if someplace like, well, like up in that zoning district, we have DLC or we have Zennel Boring, the idea was that they'd have large enough lots planned out in those areas so they could construct their business and have future area to expand on the site. So, this project is kind of looking at a mix of things, both at an allowed use, which would be the storage buildings in that zoning district, but then adding in the fact that people could reside in those buildings. I would note that this concept is new to New Ulm, but it's not unique to Minnesota. It's not unique to the Midwest. These... In fact, when I was out going to South Dakota this fall, I drove by a whole series of barn dominiums on the far north side of Brookings. So, they are out there, and there seems to be interest from area residents as well as people from outside the area in this type of dwelling unit. Here's a rendering that has been provided. This would be the storage condos that they're proposing. They're also, as you can see here, they're proposing stone facades on the front of the buildings of those storage condos. Here's another look at a storage condo. Here would be the look of the entire development space. As I mentioned earlier, they're going for a uniform look in both color, height, but they do have four different floor layout options, if I'm correct. This is the barn dominium. My apologies. This is the look of the storage condo. So, this is the location of the subject property. Here, to the south, is Walmart. Over here is industrial property that has been developed for industrial... I-1 industrial uses. And then to the north and to the west, it's vacant property that is also owned by the City of New Ulm. Here is the zoning map. You can see all this in light blue is the I-1 zoning district. Here is the proposed lot layouts over the top of an aerial photo. So, you can see that anybody that would be interested in purchasing one of these properties could enter off of Jacob Street, and it more or less makes a U around the entire property. So, there's two access points for anybody that would look to purchase one of those properties. Here is the comprehensive plan land use map. Area in purple is industrial. This area over here in green is parks, open space. That's also the airport safety zone. Here is the... Taking a look at the property from the... From the north, looking to the west, towards Walmart over here. Here again is just a little bit closer shot. The reason I took these photos is because you can see the farmer has already tilled the areas that are outside of this property, and the area that's untilled over here is what we're referring to for this application. Here's a photo taking a look to the northwest from Jacobs. And then the staff completed findings of facts. So, staff would recommend approval of the application for a PUD general development plan, and the reasons for this recommendation would be found in the findings of fact form. There would be two recommended conditions. One, that the applicant/owner will pay the cost to record necessary documents with the Brown County Recorder's Office. And two, that the establishment of the PUD project will require the approval of the following documents, which include A, rezoning the property by ordinance, B, development agreement, and then C, final plat. We have two motions, one to recommend approval and then one to recommend denial. That concludes the staff report. I would note that I think the developer has a number of folks here representing Land Haven that I'm sure would be willing to talk or answer any questions you might have.
It's kind of fun watching people leave and filter in. I have a couple of questions, and I know you talked about the city working with these people for stormwater development and places, but I want to... When I look at that particular site map, it's very compact, which is great. I mean, it's a good land use. Where are they going to put their snow plowing? Because it says it's privately plowed. It's not a city. They're responsible for their own cleaning, and it is an association. So, where is that going to go besides on public property?
So, there would be room within the lots to push that snow. I don't know if the developer has other ways they want to remove snow from the property, but the city will not be involved with removing snow from the property. That's for them to decide in their private development.
So, it stays on that property?
Correct.
Doesn't get shoveled off into the middle of Jacob Street and left?
Nope.
Okay. Are there any other questions? I can count on you, yes.
Thank you. Has there been a closing on the property sale already?
The City Council approved the purchase agreement with the developer. Closing won't happen until... And/or if the City Council approves the Plan Unit Development or General Development Plan.
Good. Just wondering. So, if you could put up maybe the air photo of the site and immediately surrounding area. I've got a question on... That one would do right there.
This one will work?
Essentially, the property immediately to the west of the site will continue to be city-owned, but if it's, you know, a large user that wants to pick up the rest of that piece or part of it, it ends up having an odd configuration. I wouldn't say that it's landlocked, but it makes it more difficult to develop because you can't get at it easily. Has that already been considered?
It has been considered. And I would note, there's actually a few unique circumstances on this site that really aren't shown on aerial photos. So, in addition to where roadways could be placed on the site and moving further to the west, there is also a shared tile... Major tile line that serves much of the property past Sopson Slough, okay? Going to the west on Highway 14. That cuts through the corner right about in this area that already cuts up... Cuts up that property significantly. One thing that, because of the strange configurations of where that tile line is on the property, one thing being considered by the city and especially the public utilities, is locating the next substation out in that area.
Okay. Would that, like, take most or all of what's left of that piece?
It could, yes. Yep.
All right.
I was kind of happy to see the barn dominium part of it, but when I look at the map, the barn dominiums, I'm assuming, are the exterior portion and the interior, but that can't be all storage. They have to be some barn dominiums, because there's six barn dominiums?
So, if I understand correctly, the barn dominiums are proposed to be 1 through 22, 23 through 28 would be the storage condominiums.
Oh, okay. Thank you. That was unclear to me. And I do believe, and Michelle can probably set my mind at rest, because in your profession, you probably see more barn dominiums now than we have in the past, because, I mean, insurance has always been a struggle on this kind of project, but I understand that there has been some concerns that...
Yeah. We haven't had any issues financing them. We haven't had any issues with insurance. They're popular.
Yeah. Okay.
We call them shouses. I'm guessing it's similar.
Okay.
But, yeah.
What do you call them?
Shouse. Combination.
Shop and house?
Yep.
Okay. Cool.
Is there anyone from the audience that wishes to speak? This group's quiet. Okay.
Could I just pose one more?
Yes.
It's just a thought. Planners are allergic to single-loaded streets. Why is there a single-loaded street here? Just not enough demand for additional row of barn dominiums, or it just cries out for future requests to load the other side of the street? I know it's private, but...
On the north, are you referring to?
Yes.
Right. So, one of the things the city would like to consider in the future on this property, we're going to be following the same process that we would be doing with that North Highland project, coming back to the Planning Commission with conceptual layouts of roadways in that area, because we have to consider a couple of things, both that line that was tile, where the PUC substation could be located, and then also where stormwater is ultimately going to be located on the site. So, there's a number of different factors we have to take into consideration, and we don't have that at this time, but we'll come back to the Planning Commission with that.
So, is there the possibility there's a phase two to this one, and the other side of that private street gets loaded instead of wasted?
I suppose there could be. There could be, or there could be... Yeah, that would make logical sense, but I think the city isn't interested in any way, shape, or form taking over that private street.
It's... It is publicly speaking substandard, and why would we want to?
Yep.
Right?
Are there any other questions, audience, commission? Would you like to go through the finding of facts prior to closing the public hearing, or do you want to continue?
Before we move on, the... So, when I look at the rendering of the whole area, right, I'm just curious about the private streets, because what we see with these types of buildings is maybe private truckers or something, so semis being stored inside and whatnot. Is there room on these streets to be able to maneuver semi-trucks into those shouses?
The city engineer reviewed this site, and this would meet the standard for internal movements for a private development like this, not for a city street. We would require at least probably a 60-foot roadway in cases like this. Now, having a narrower roadway in this case isn't some... We don't really dictate how wide that has to be. So, if the developer can accommodate someone who wants to use a semi and purchase one of these properties, that's really their own issue that they have to deal with and not the city's responsibility.
Okay. And then, what was the other question? Oh. Is the developer planning to construct the whole property at once, or are they going to construct them as they're sold? Is that kind of the plan?
If I understand correctly, they may put up one as kind of a showcase piece and then develop them as they're sold.
Okay. Yes. Back to the private street and utilities. Have staff seen association documents yet?
We have not seen them.
So, you don't really know if the mechanism for taking care of these streets is adequately addressed or not yet?
We don't know that, but we will have those mechanisms in the association documents, because we will review those before they're recorded with the Brown County Recorder's Office. We've done this with a similar situation where we had attached sheds, and we had to review the... We had conditions that went along with the approval of those... That project, and then found... Or, not found, but were given the association documents for review by the city attorney prior to that project moving forward.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? I'm going to move on to the finding facts and close the meeting after in case any corrections, any questions come up. Is that all right?
Yeah.
I'm assuming you want this read?
That's up to the commission.
Has the commission read the finding of facts forms and/or do they agree or have questions before I... Has everyone had a chance to read them?
Yes.
Do you want them read, or do you want to accept them as presented?
Let's accept them.
Accept them.
Just as they're presented.
Yes. Everyone is agreement? Okay. We are willing to accept the finding of facts as presented. So, I am going to close the public hearing portion of this meeting and call for a motion.
I'd like to move that we recommend approval of this general plan, this PUD general plan, with the conditions that have been specified by city staff.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. When does this appear? June 3?
This will go to the City Council on June 3, next Tuesday, at 4:30.
Thank you all very much. Next item on the agenda is the variance request from Renee Peterson, 608 South Front Street. Staff? I don't want you all to be upset that I'm getting hangry. I don't want you all to be upset that I'm getting hangry.
I think we all are.
It's not your fault.
So this is a public hearing on a variance request to allow the construction of a 28 by 35-foot residential detached garage to be constructed between the existing home and the front yard setback line. The applicant is Renee Peterson. She is also the property owner. Legal description is lot 3, block 6, south of Center Street. The street address for the property is 608 South Front Street, and the property is generally located on the west side of Front Street between 6th South Street, 6th Street South, and then 7th South Street in the middle of the block. Deadline for a decision on the application is July 1st, 2025. The land use designation for the property is low-density residential. Surrounding land uses all include low-density residential. Zoning designation for the property is the RT2. That's the traditional neighborhood, single-family residence district. That same zoning district surrounds the property on all sides. Currently, the site is used as a single-family home with associated residential accessory structures. Current area land uses to the north, south, east, and west are all single-family homes, again with associated residential land uses. Notice was provided to all property owners within 350 feet of the subject property and published in the Journal on May 10th, 2025. We did receive two phone calls from neighboring properties inquiring about details of the proposal. The first phone call was inquiring about where the proposed garage would be placed on the property, and after discussion with that resident, they were not opposed to the variance. The second phone call was again asking for more detail on the proposal and asked that potential stormwater coming from the building be kept on the site and not allowed to flow onto neighboring properties. We also did receive a letter on 5, May 27th, 2025 regarding the variance, and that is included with your staff reports. So the property requesting the variance is located in our typical 50 by 165 gridlot arrangement. The applicant is proposing to install that 28 by 35 residential detached garage that would be approximately 980 square feet. In a residential zoning district, property owners are allowed to build a detached accessory structure up to 1,000 square feet. All detached accessory structures on the property count towards that 1,000 square feet allowed on the property. The garage is proposed to be built slab-on-grade with the driveway off of South Front Street. The applicant would need to secure curb cut permit from the city engineer with a maximum curb cut allowance of 24 feet in width. Section 9.3 of the zoning ordinance requires that in a residential zoning district, that any detached accessory structure be located to the side or behind the principal structure on the property. Principal structure in a residential district is typically the residence. This is the same item we had discussed with the Highland Apartments project. The required front yard setback for the zoning district is 30 feet. In residential zoning districts where adjacent structures within the same block have front yard setbacks different from those required, the front yard minimum setback shall be the average of the adjacent structures. So what I mean by that is if there are houses or structures on either side of the lot we're looking at, and they're closer to the front yard property line than what's required by the zoning ordinance, you can essentially draw a line from one to the other, from the closest point of one to the closest point of the other to the front property line, and any proposed structure on the interior lot has to be along that line or behind it. Side and rear yard setbacks will be maintained with this proposal. So site conditions, the existing house on the property was constructed in 1952. The location of the house on this property is approximately 110 feet from the front property line, five feet from the north or side property line, 22 feet from the south or side property line, and then zero feet from the rear alley property lines. It's literally butted right up to the telephone pole located in the alley. The neighbor's house to the north is approximately 12 feet from the front yard property line, and the neighbor's house to the south is approximately 18 feet from the front yard property line. The garage being proposed is to be 10 feet setback from that average front yard property line or the front of those property lines between the house to the north and to the south. The proposed garage size would not fit between the existing home on the south side of the property. If the garage were attached to the home, the garage would need to install 42-inch frost footing at minimum to match the footing depth of the home. Staff has reviewed aerial photos of the RT1 and RT2 zoning district and found nine other properties within the city where the home is setback on the rear lot property line or directly abutting the alley. So there are other locations within the city where this type of house configuration is applicable. The application provides the following information on the project. We're proposing to place the garage behind the front line of the home and to our north and south, as it will not interfere with their front line of the homes to our north and south, so will not interfere with their sightlines. Our home is setback further than all the other homes in the neighborhood and approximately 85 feet from the fronts of the houses to the north and the south. We did not construct our home at this location. The home was constructed in 1952, and at that time, they did not likely understand that setting the home at this location would cause further issues. We are not asking to go in front of the required setback for the zoning district. So evaluation. Staff believes the location of the house on the property, abutting the rear property line and alley is unique to this site and the neighborhood. The home that was constructed on the site in 1952 was not built by the current owner, and therefore, the owner has not created the situation on the site that necessitates the variance request. The proposed location of the garage is behind the required front yard setback line and is situated in a way that would not cause sightline issues with neighboring properties. The request being made is reasonable use of the property and will not change the essential character of the neighborhood. Further staff evaluation can be found in Attachment 7, the staff completed findings of facts. We did have included in the attachments, or sorry, we did have seven attachments. First is the application. Second is the site location map. You can see we have the railroad, the railroad to the west and the Minnesota River to the east residential surrounding that. Here is the zoning map. Here is the site map as to what the applicant is proposing to do on the site. So just to get back, oops, excuse me, to get back to the 1,000-square-foot allowance of a detached accessory structure on the property, if they were to go to the 980 that's being proposed, this shed will certainly need to be removed, and then they're only allowed to have 20 extra square feet of storage, detached storage building on the property. So if that other shed needs to come down, that will also be a requirement, that should also be a requirement to, or a condition to consider this variance request. Here you can see that front yard setback line, and the applicant's proposing go roughly 10 feet behind that line. Here's a picture of the property looking towards the rear, and here in the back, this blue, this is the blue house right here. Here is from the rear of the property. As you can see, the telephone pole is right there. Generally speaking, in the city of New Ulm, the telephone pole is at the property line or a foot, a foot off of the property line, so it's very close. And then we have our staff completed findings of facts. If considered for approval, staff would recommend actually four conditions, two new ones that weren't in the staff report. So first, the applicant shall pay the cost to record the variance with the Brown County Recorder's Office. Two, that the applicant will contact the city to verify the location of the building once it is staked. Three, that any buildings on the property that will cause the property to exceed the allowed 1,000-square-foot of detached accessory structure on the site to be removed within 90 days of the submittal of the building plan. So that would be the triggering mechanism. Four, downspouts on the buildings shall be installed so that water from the structure is directed towards the front, meaning South Front Street or the rear alley side of the property has to not put water onto the neighboring properties. That concludes the staff report.
Oh, sorry. Sorry about that. I was just wondering if you could repeat that, the trigger condition?
Sure. So that would be condition number three, and that currently reads that any buildings on the property that will cause the property to exceed the 1,000-square-foot detached accessory structure allowance on the site be removed within 90 days of the submittal of the building per, building plan, building, no, building application for the new garage. That's the way it should read.
Kind of clarify, it's got to be done before the building of the actual garage?
No, because what we're trying to do is provide a little bit of space in there between the time period when the building application is submitted, where they can build the garage yet still have storage space available for whatever they need it for, and then at least provide a reasonable time period to get that constructed and then get those buildings removed.
John, is the entry to the garage off the street or from the rear of the property?
It would be from Front Street. There would be a new curb cut.
I want to address the letters, and one of the questions seems to be noise, and I, you know, God forbid, I limit someone's access to a motor vehicle and repairs and that kind of thing, but this is not a business being run out of this garage. I want that addressed first.
Well, we can make it clear that there, I mean, our zoning ordinance doesn't allow any motive, any automotive types of business to be located in a residential zoning district. We went through that process and clarified that process very clearly, and we don't even give a conditional use permit or a variance to operate any automotive, so...
And there are sound restrictions that if, that there are limits to times that you can be, was it 10 o'clock, 11 o'clock, 9:00?
If I'm, I believe it is from 8 to 10, Monday through Friday, and then 9 to 9 on Saturday and Sunday. I would, correct me if I'm wrong on that.
9 o'clock on weeknights, 10 on the week.
It's reversed, yeah. Yeah. So if that being the case, the tools we have at hand for that is to simply call the police department.
Correct.
And I know that's not always the best tool, but that's the tool we have at our disposal for those noise disturbances.
And we really can't restrict what someone is doing in their garage on their time unless it's exceeding an ordinance that the city has in place, correct?
Yep, yep.
Are there any other questions?
Could I go back to that trigger?
Sure.
Is the applicant okay with 90 days from building permit application? I ask that because when I built my garage, it took me longer than that to finish it because I did it myself, so are you okay with that?
Step up to the microphone, please, state your name and address. Thank you.
Justin DeZayou, 608 South Front Street. I guess the biggest thing would be when he would start the garage.
So you're contracting for the work?
Timeframe after that.
Okay.
Because I don't know how soon he would be able to even start it, so...
If you're all okay with that, then I'm not going to make another suggestion, but maybe 30 days from final inspection works as well.
Sure.
It's up to you. It's... Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions?
I mean, we can, if you would like to make that change, that's a reasonable change as well, because some, there are times where we get building permit applications, they don't start the project for another 40 days.
Right.
So it may be a better trigger to have it 30 days after the file inspection.
Right.
I think that's reasonable.
Anyone else?
Is there a time limit on the building construction permit? I don't know.
180 days?
180 days, but that's if it goes dormant. So if there's progress on the, on the building, it could go for a year or, just depends on what the timeline is for the construction.
Name and address, please.
Sue Sullivan, 604 South Front. I'm the north lot adjacent to them. My biggest concern is water issues, and I don't know if you saw the pictures that I submitted and the runoff that I already had to deal with, with them not maintaining their downspouts, the elevation of their house already. The other factor is too, is I don't believe that on the GIS on the property lines that that is the existing property line. If you look to the north of me, that house was constructed about six years ago, and the GIS zoning shows that the property line is literally on the roof of their house. So when it states that their house is five feet off of the north lot, it's not accurate. I had Brad Kraus at one point, who is a city assessor, or not assessor, surveyor, that actually surveyed, because I was curious where that property line was with that house being so close to the alley and to my lot, and he stated that it's about six inches off the property line. So with that said, you know, where they're proposing on putting their garage and water issues, I did talk to Mr. Nysley, and he said there can be conditions done to prevent water issues while they're building, but if they're not maintaining their downspouts and directing that water off, you know, a little bit of water off of a 28 by 35-foot garage can do a lot of devastation to a house.
Would you have an address to that as far as property and runoff? Is that part of your inspection to make sure that there's drainage?
We look at drainage from the structure. It's required six inches and 10 feet that slopes away from the structure for houses and that. We can look at recommending swells and stuff, but it becomes a private issue. It's, there's nothing addressed in the city ordinances of stating that water stays on your property. That's as much as we get into it.
Right, and so I had a realtor come and look at the situation too, to see because of the elevation to where they're going to be putting the garage from Front Street, it's considerably high.
Yes.
And so you're going to have this massive, and I shouldn't say massive, but a three-stall garage that not any other location on Front Street has facing the front. She said property value may not be secured by it, but she said definitely it's going to be a hindrance for resale, and then it also, if there is any water issues, it will devalue my house considerably.
I understand.
So those are my big issues that I have with it, and then also figuring out where the exact property line is and the setbacks and where they're going to put that garage.
I understand. I have a similar situation at my house. I have a garage that is abutting a telephone pole exactly like that. I happen to spend a lot of time watching the drain off and things like that because of the neighbors, but this is a house in residence, and it probably has more drainage, and the garage is quite a bit of drainage, and I was at the site and I looked at it, and it is...
Well, even when they put that, they didn't put it up, but the previous owner had put up that deck in front.
Right.
That also has a retaining wall, so that's also raising the elevation considerably there too for runoff.
Right.
And I can't believe that the city approved that back in the day.
I don't think a retaining wall requires approval by the city.
Even the location of the deck and the sides off the property line, because there was no setback there. So, but I, yeah, I would like to know, you know, more if that has to be surveyed to figure out where that property line is and where that garage is going to actually be put, and then also, you know, if you look at those pictures that I took too, and their downspouts to their house, there's a lot of drainage that's affecting their foundation as well, so they're not maintaining that either. And so, you know, because of looking at that, how is there going to be a guarantee that they're going to maintain that watershed from that garage, even having downspouts on it? They can clog even if gutter guards on.
As far as property placement of the garage, are you, you do make sure that that is well within the setbacks and lines of the property? Is that not correct?
Correct, yeah.
Right, but what property lines are you going off of? Because the GS, the GIS isn't correct.
There's either getting a survey, finding property pin... There's either getting a survey, finding property pins, or if it's to the interior of the, of the lot, measuring off the streets, and that's approximately within a foot or two feet of where the property lines are.
Right, correct, and that's why I was saying when Brad Kraus did that, and you guys have it stated in the proposal that it's five feet off the property line their house is. It's not.
Right, and I, I don't know where they're, if they're lining up to the interior of lot, the lot's 50 foot wide. If they're doing 35 feet, we've got 15 feet on either side if they center it in the lot.
They were proposing to do it 10 feet off of the north lot, so that's why I was just questioning.
Sure.
That it's not further over than what they're proposing.
Yep.
Because a lot of the water issues as well.
So it's, you know, looking like probably it'd have to get surveyed.
And that is the purpose, when they stake the, the garage out, that is one of the things you look for, that it's staked properly? Okay.
And then I'm also talking about the integrity of the neighborhood with that garage, you know, being elevated up on, facing the front street.
I understand. I can't do anything about the elevation.
No, I know, but it's also going against, you know, the city code of having a building in front of their existing residence, so.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, and then also, what is, so if you give them the, the 30 days or whatever to tear down those buildings, what happens if they don't? What's the guarantee?
Well, you are free to call the city and, and, and speak Delwood if that 30 days isn't.
I heard that you can put a condition onto it for like a dollar value, that if they don't, then there's a dollar value that.
That I, I would have, we'd have to talk to city attorney on, on that issue, but it would be a matter of sending a letter and, and going how the ordinance is written for violations of the, of the ordinance.
And then the other thing that I had too was, in regards to the noise issue, he does body repair, not repair, or work on demo cars, and that's been a big issue, so if he moves it to the front, that's going to be by residential housing instead of in the alley, so that's going to be causing a lot more nuisance as well.
And that I addressed, there's only so much we can do there, and that, again, if it exceeds noise times of day, then you have the option to call the police and have, and report that.
Correct, but the city code also states that if it interferes with what's an existing normalcy of a residency with the noise, then that there's an issue too, that they're not supposed to exceed that. So that would definitely change, you know, listening to your TV or having a conversation with somebody in your own residence by having that towards the, where it would normally be a house.
And at that point, then I think you have to report it to the police because it's in violation.
Okay.
Okay.
I got a question for, couple for John. So John, I think you said that there was 11 existing homes in the community that are in the rear of a lot, something like that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It might have been nine, actually.
Okay, or nine. Okay. So my question is, do they have a garage in the front yard in any of these rare circumstances?
Some do, some don't. A lot of them have them on the sides like we see here.
Okay.
Isn't there one on Fifth North by your, right down from you?
Typically though, you know, these ones that are right on the property line in the rear of the property, they might not even have had a garage at some point. They had a parking space or a paved space to the side of the house. None of those that, none of the nine that we discussed are new houses. They're all relatively old, 60s or earlier.
I'm just looking for consistency if they've, someone else built a garage in the front yard, you know, on an existing one.
Is there any other discussion before I move on to the finding of facts?
One question. Do we, do we have preliminary plans yet for the, for the garage? Do we know if there's going to be windows on the north side? Do we know if there's going to be soundproofing or what the construction?
Right, so they're, they're proposing to get a garage that is supposed, what they've told me is, is going to be, have vinyl on it and to match the existing home, and to have windows on at least the home side of, of that garage space. They didn't mention having windows on the neighboring sides. I do not know about sound control or if they're proposing to insulate that, because we don't have a, we don't have a building permit that's been submitted yet.
One more time. Questions? Anybody from the audience that has any comments or questions? Now I'm going to move to the finding of facts. Do you, do you want them read, or do you want to accept the finding of facts as published?
That's again up to the planning commission. Sounds like the planning commission would like to maybe consider some additional conditions.
I think we should read them in, you know, I mean, we're going to look at other conditions and just go through it.
I just have to find them.
Page 16.
There we are. Okay. Is the variance in harmony with the purpose and intent of the city's zoning ordinance?
Staff responded, yes, the proposed detached garage is consistent as a residential detached accessory structure and consistent with the character of neighborhoods, residential neighborhoods, and does not impede the orderly development of the area.
Is everyone in agreement, or are there, are there questions?
Yes.
I agree with what's said, and I think we need to specify we're not talking about use, we're talking about structure, and then I agree.
Can I agree?
Yes. Does everyone agree?
Yes.
Is the variance request consistent with the city's comprehensive plan?
So the proposed detached garage is low density residential in character. The property is located in a low density residence land use area, so therefore the garage is consistent with the land use designation.
Do we agree?
Yes.
Does the proposal put the property to use in a reasonable manner, not permitted by the city, but, city zoning ordinance?
Staff responded, yes, the setback from which the variance is being sought, relieved from, is the city's regulations that do not allow detached accessory structure in front of the permitted structure on the property. Because the home is located on, right on the rear property line, there are few options for detached accessory structures on the property other than in front of the home that could be of this size.
I'm missing question four.
It's on the next page.
Yes, it's on the next page, but, oh, okay, is that the question? I was thinking that was, okay, I got to enlarge this. Does a proposal impair adequately?
I think we have to go back to number three. We didn't say yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay. I'm busy. Does everyone agree with number three?
Yes.
Does a proposal impair adequate supply of light and air to adjacent property, unreasonably increase congestion in this public streets, increase the danger of fires, substantially diminish property values, and will not be materially detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare, or injurious to the property or improvements in the zoning district or neighborhood in which the property is located?
Staff responded, no, that the proposed location of the detached garage does not negatively impact safety. It's not expected to diminish property values or cause injury to the property or improvements in the neighborhood.
Do we agree or disagree?
Agree.
Agree as long as the drainage is taken care of properly. And there's a condition of approval to that effect, so, yes.
Okay. Are the physical surroundings, life size or shape, topography, water conditions, or other physical conditions unique to this property?
The locate, staff responded, yes, the location of the existing home is the reason for the variance request. The home was placed on the rear of the property, property line abutting in the alley. Locating your garage in line or behind the front of the house is a challenge on this site.
Does everyone agree or disagree?
Yes.
Agree.
Agree. The unique circumstances related to the property do not generally apply to other properties and building in the same zoning district or vicinity.
Staff responded, yes, that the property is unusual in the fact that the home is abutting in the rear property line. Staff found nine other properties in the community with similar configurations in the grid section of New Ulm.
Agree or disagree?
Agree.
Agree.
The unique circumstances related to the property were not created by the owner of the property.
Staff responded, yes, that the home on the property was constructed in 1952 prior to the existing homeowners owning the property.
Do we agree or disagree?
Agree.
Will the variance alter the essential charis, character of the locality?
Staff responded that, no, the proposed garage would be behind the front of the home to the north and the south, and the garage will be residential in nature and architecture and proposed to match the existing home on the site.
Do we agree or disagree?
Agree.
Does the variance request the minimum amount necessary to eliminate the practical difficulties?
Staff responded, no, economic considerations were not a reason for the proposed placement of the garage.
That's 10.
That's 10.
Half one?
I was just.
Oh, sorry. The, simply, staff responded, yes, that's the minimum amount.
Okay. Do we agree?
Yep.
Agree.
Question 10, do economic considerations alone not allow for the reasonable use of the property?
Staff responded, no, economic considerations were not the reason for the proposed placement of the garage.
Does anyone wish to address more questions or concerns, or would they like to put their amendments in the conditions when they make a motion?
John, would you repeat the four that you have identified?
Give me a second. So the first one was that the applicant shall pay the cost to record the variance with the Brown County Corde's office. Number two is that the applicant will contact the city to verify the location of the building once it is staked. Number three, that any buildings on the property that will cause the property to exceed the allowed 1,000 square feet of detached accessory structures on the site be removed, and we're changing this to within 30 days of the final inspection of the new building. And then number four, that downspouts on the, the building shall be installed so that water from the structure be directed towards the front or rear of the property and not to the side yard areas.
And for condition number two, are, are, is it within our authority to ask for them to have a surveyor shoot that line? Then I, okay, I will add that then. Shall I make a motion, or may I?
Please.
I move that we recommend approval of this variance request with the four conditions outlined by John, except that we would amend number two to require a surveyor to, to shoot that line so that staking is, is certain.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
A second and motion.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried, and this is June 3rd?
June 3rd.
Closes the public hearing for the variance request for Renee Peterson, and I am opening the public hearing portion of the meeting for the COP request for Caitlin Cordis, 1501 North Minnesota Street. Staff?
Maybe we should just bring a little light to the conversation tonight, too. Dave Schnobrick, who's worked for the city for over 40 years, told me that tonight's meeting is the longest agenda he's ever experienced in his life.
I want to experience again also.
He knows when to take a vacation.
Yeah. I should have brought lunch.
Okay, this is public hearing request for a conditional use permit to allow six foot tall fence in the front yard setback area. The applicant is Caitlin Cordis, the property owners are Ronnie and Sue Cordis. The legal description of the property is Lot 1, Block 81, North of Center Street. The street address is 1501 North Minnesota Street. The property is located to the west side of North Minnesota Street and north of North, north of 15th North Street. Deadline, sorry, deadline for decision on this application that is incorrect in the staff report, that is also July 11th, 2025. The land use designation from the comprehensive plan is low density residential. Surrounding land uses to the north, south, and east are low density residential, and then to the west, commercial. Zoning designation of the property is RT2, that's the traditional neighborhood, single and two family residence district. Surrounding zoning of this property to the north, south, and east are RT2. To the west, it's B2, that's the general business district. The current site land use is a single family residence. Current area land uses include to the north, south, and east, single family residences, and then to the west, single family residence and commercial uses. Notice was provided to all property owners within 350 feet of the subject property and published in the journal on May 17th, 2025. To date, we haven't received any public comment on this application. So Section 13.2 of Appendix A describes the front yard as an open, unobstructed yard extending along the full width of the front lot line between the side lot lines and extending from the abutting street right of way to a depth required in the setback regulations for the zoning district in which the lot is located. This property has two front yards, one facing North Minnesota Street and one facing 15th North Street. When the property has two front yards or is a corner lot, the opposite property lines are considered to be side yards, so that, that would be the rear alley side and then the side abutting in the neighbor's property. For properties located on numbered streets in the RT2 zoning district, the front yard setback area is 10 feet. In this situation, part of the fencing facing 15th North Street is located within the front yard setback area and is required to be no taller than 48 inches. Section 10.3 EB states a fence is not exceeding, fences not exceeding 48 inches in the, in height, fences exceeding 48 inches in height may be located within the front yard setback area, may not be, let me restate that. You're not supposed to have a fence that's six feet in height in the front yard setback area. The applicant was issued a fence permit by, mistaken by city staff, and when staff saw the fence was being installed at six feet tall in this location, they contacted the property owner regarding the height of the fence in this location. The applicant immediately stopped construction on the fence and waited until we are here today to discuss this matter. After discussion with the applicant and the city attorney, it was decided that the property owner could apply for a conditional use permit to allow fence in that location at that height. Fences 48 inches or less in height located in the front yard may be located within, may be located within 12 inches or greater, may not be located within 12 inches or greater from the property line, if they have been located. If they are located, if they want to locate the fence right on the property line, they either have to have the survey pins to go off of, or the property be surveyed. So fences, when locating fences within the front yard setback area, there exists required sites, safety areas where the fence is not allowed or needs to be 50% or more transparent. These areas include fences abutting in the driveway or street corner, and the fence in its current location, staff would consider to be in compliance with this provision, provided there might need to be one post, maybe moved right here to provide a there might need to be one post, uh, maybe moved, um, right here to provide a better sightline to the driveway. Uh, other than that, the fences, uh, compliance, uh, is in compliance with, other than height. Um, the application provided and stated the following information on the project. Uh, the fence will be constructed out of white vinyl, uh, panels and matched to look of the residential neighborhood. Uh, we will be closing off one of the driveways entirely, um, and keeping vehicles parked in the alley side of the property. Uh, the fence, uh, they would like the fence in this location for multiple reasons. One, to keep the larger dog in, and then also to address recent issues with people trespassing into the yard from the sidewalk. So, we do have, uh, six attachments, the application, uh, the site location map, zoning map, uh, site map, ground level photographs of the property, and then staff's response to the findings of fact form. Uh, the applicant prop, uh, conditions being proposed by staff would be that the applicant property owner will pay the cost to record the permit with the Brown County Recorder's Office. Two, that the fence will be regularly maintained but not become, uh, and not become or remain in a condition of disrepair or constitute a nuisance. Uh, the permit, and number three, the permit is limited to the location and dimensions of the installed fence located in the front yard area and shown on attachment four, uh, site map. I would note that, um, we had issued a fence permit, uh, a conditional use fence permit to be located within the front yard setback area for a, a similar, uh, lot configuration. It was a corner lot, um, on 7th South and Broadway, I believe it was a year or two ago.
Wasn't there another one down by Hounstein in that development in there, too? Was she, the fence was already up and?
There's a front yard setback.
Yep.
Down by the frisbee golf.
Because it was an odd-shaped yard and everything, too. Yeah.
It's got two front yards, setbacks.
So that would conclude the staff report.
I have a question for Elwood, is this, is this acceptable if it's considered a side yard?
Well, it's considered a front yard.
I know it's considered a front yard, but when I look at the house, it's a side yard. I, I mean, it's, it's back to the old argument, there's two front yard setbacks for this property.
Yep.
So.
So, yeah, it's, it's spelled out in our ordinance and our, um, diagrams of the corner lots have the two front yards and-
Yeah.
Um, 48 inches is the requirement.
It's a nice fence.
Uh, regard to the mention of the one post may be needed to re- removed, let's use English. How is that gonna affect the construction having a diagonal portion in there? Is that gonna be?
Well, we have, we would have to talk to the applicant about that, and maybe Ronnie's here, I think he's doing the construction of the, of, of the fence.
State your name and the address, please.
Ronnie Cordes, um, 1501 North Minnesota Street.
Thank you.
We orig- our original plan was to have that square corner there as it was drawn up. Um, for us to change that, now the panels aren't going to come out, even panels. So, you know, we, the posts are already, those posts are already currently located where they're going to be, and everything was measured out to have full panels. So for us to go across there now is gonna change the entire layout of the whole works all the way down the line. And over half of the posts are already currently set because we were told we could start and have what we wanted.
That one in the back is set.
For us to move it now is going to be a pain.
I'm gonna just ask, Elwood, would, you'd have to have a 45 there or some sort of for sight view off of a garage driveway?
Well, the way it's-
Or would it, would it be okay?
Way it's stated in the code, we're supposed to be 25 feet from the driveway back along the sidewalk, and then at least 25 feet up to the garage, or the garage is closer up to the corner of the garage, and 45 it off of that, or whatever the angle is, at the angle. That or have 50% or more viewing through the fence, and then it can go square.
If that was a four-foot fence, would the requirement be the same that you have that diagonal?
Correct, yes.
So whether it's six foot or four foot, that diagonal should be there?
Unless it's 50% or more transparent, then it can be, then it can go square.
So if that portion were chain link, it would be fine?
Correct.
Okay. Yes.
As I understand, the height restriction on front yard fencing, it more or less is to create an openness, to avoid sort of tunnelizing and in traditional neighborhoods. Is that, is that correct, or what is, what is, what is the reason for a 48-inch front yard instead of a six-foot?
Well, I would say aesthetic reasons are, are part of the equation, correct.
Okay.
And the safety concerns of being able to see in the-
To see.
See in the yard or out of the yard.
Okay. Is there, so the follow-up to that, where I'm going with this is, is it possible to allow the six feet but to have panels that are solid to 48, and then, I don't know, something else above that? We're going by CUP?
Yeah, we, we had that discussion, I had that discussion-
Okay.
With the property owner, and they are not interested in pursuing that, and they couldn't find the panels that would work for them.
Of course. All right.
So, I might understand, th- the reason the project was stopped was because it was six foot, not four foot, or was it stopped because als- in addition, this diagonal is not there?
Because noticing of the six-foot fence in the front yard setback.
Okay. And now the, the diagonal has to, has to be there, or you have to have a see-through fence?
Correct.
I mean, it, it doesn't have to be a diagonal, it could be the geometry of the, it could still be squared off, it'd just have to be moved back east a ways so that there'd be open space there.
I think that's right.
You could have a box, like a square corner.
Yeah, yeah.
There's, there's opportunity.
Not ideal.
Yeah. But, but we're addressing the heights, so. And we've done it before, so we're consistent.
You're correct, we are addressing just the height. Not the angle. Are there other questions or concerns? Does anyone have any other questions before I go to the finding of facts? Please state your name and address.
Susan Cordes, uh, 1501 North Minnesota. I would just like to say that two blocks down from Caitlin's house, um, across from ARR Construction, there is a six-foot fence, wooden, dark, not as nice fence as, and it's exactly what Caitlin wants. It goes up to the front of the house along the sidewalk and then back to the garage. And that sits on a, well, not sits right on the alley, there's the body shop there, but that fence is exactly like Caitlin's. So, there are fences in town like Caitlin's. Caitlin's is gonna be nicer, newer, but, yeah, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Finding of facts.
Are you wanting to go through each one of them, or are we?
That's my question, do we want to address each issue, or do we want to? No, okay.
I'm okay.
We are accepting the finding of facts as presented, is that correct?
Correct.
Correct. Then I'm going to close the public hearing portion of this meeting and call for a motion.
Could I pose one more question first?
Go ahead.
The, the fence that you were just referring to down Minnesota, is that on property that's zoned other than residential? I mean, it feels like it's a different neighborhood there.
I would have to double-check, are they referring to, what would that be, 18th North?
About 15, 6-
19th?
Yeah, yeah.
Straight across from ARR Kitty Court.
Yeah, yeah. That might be industrial.
And that fence may have been constructed before the fencing ordinance was enforced.
Did that answer your question?
Yep.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to, uh, recommend approval with conditions, uh, the conditional use permit application of Caitlin Cordes to allow a six-foot tall fence to remain in the front yard setback area of the 15th North Street, uh, side of the property zoned RT2, and legally described as Lot 1, Block 81, north of Center Street.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. This appears June 3rd also before the con- That closes the public hearing portion of this agenda. Moving on to consideration for approval of final plats of the Keepers Highland Apartment Edition.
Okay, so I have a proposition for the planning commission. Um, we have two final plats that you're gonna be reviewing tonight. One is for the Highland Apartments, uh, or Highland Apartments Edition. The other one is, um, the other one is for the Sarah Hill's Fourth Edition.
Consider them together?
We haven't made any, uh, changes to either of those final plats from the review of the preliminary plats. So, what I could do, um, if you want, is go skip all the background information and move on to, move on to just a few of the details. So, is that all right with you?
Please do.
That's fine.
All right.
Please, otherwise someone's gonna have to make a run.
Okay, so, uh, this would be, this first one is the final plat of the Highlands Apartment Edition. The area proposed for planning, uh, is 9.09 acres. Uh, the property generally slopes from north to south, and the property currently consists of parts of four lots. Uh, the plat will divide the property into four lots and will also provide street right-of-way extension of 10th North Street. Uh, the four lots have a, uh, frontage on the extension of 10th North Street, North Island Avenue, and 7th North Street. The lots have the required frontage onto an existing proposed street. Uh, the plat will divide the property as follows, Lot 1 would be, uh, 93,404 square feet, um, Lot 2 would be 1, uh, 105,538 square feet, Lot 3 would be 87,904 square feet, Lot 4 would be 100,790 square feet, and then the 10th North Street would be 43,756 square feet, for a total area of 40, 431,244 square feet. Um, this is the property we review, we reviewed earlier and is proposed, uh, for plating as the Planning and Development District. All four lots comply with the city's zoning standards for the R4 zoning district, uh, the proposed buildings comply with the city's setback requirements. So the status of, uh, of the Parkland, uh, dedication fee payment is pending, uh, to provide, uh, an electronic file of the plat in AutoCAD 2016 or newer. Uh, notice has been provided to the surveyor, uh, entering into a development agreement, uh, that agreement is pending. Uh, resolution approving the plat will be filed with the Brown County Recorder's Office, uh, that filing is pending. Determine if the connection fee must be paid for access to the Stormwater Quality Pond located, uh, south of 7th, uh, 7th North Street, uh, that decision is pending. And then, uh, secure a Planning and Development rezoning designation, uh, for the property, and that designation is also pending city council review and approval. Um, there were two attachments provided with the final plat. Um, one is the final plat, and then the other is the site location map. Uh, staff would recommend, staff would recommend approval of the final plat with the condition, condition, otherwise the plat complies with the city code requirements. Um, the recommended conditions are the completion of those pending items, uh, I just listed. There's two potential motions. Um, one is to, uh, recommend approval, and one is to recommend denial of the final plat to the city council.
And are the, the conditions the same for both plats?
No, no.
No, okay.
They're different.
So we are voting on conditions for Highland?
We're gonna do them as two separate items, because- I'd have to, I'd have to change, uh, the description a little bit.
I don't remember those condition, list of, of things to be taken care of yet. I'm gonna beat a dead horse. Is the landscaping plan in there?
Not with the plat.
Not with the plat, that's part of the, the P, the general plan?
With the plat.
Got it, okay.
The conditions for Highland are pay the Parkland dedication, provide the electronic file, um, enter into a development agreement.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm okay with those. I got a question on, I, I noticed on the plat that there's a, that on the neighboring property, um, the, the childcare, um, building there, business there, there's an alley platted. Was that ever, is platted, but was it ever improved and opened, or?
Never been improved and opened, it's just platted.
Okay.
And that, too, is what we referred to earlier, it'd really actually be a nice recreational access point, either for a sidewalk, or a bike trail, or a walking trail, right? Because it kinda connects the neighborhoods down to Fender Park.
Okay.
I get that, it's like, like a gateway.
Yeah.
Are we ready for a motion?
We are ready for a motion on the Highland Apartments Edition.
I'd, uh, move approval with the conditions that, uh, John has outlined for us.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I want you to all to know that I hold the record for the longest meeting of HBC also.
Good luck.
Thank you. Sarah Hill's Edition, final plats, yeah?
All right. So, this is the final plat of Sarah Hill's Fourth Edition. Let me get to the project description, the platted, uh, platted area totals 2.75 acres. Uh, the property is generally flat. The property, property currently consists- Consists of four outlots on one parcel of property, and then the plat will divide the property into two lots. Both lots will have the required amount of frontage on either Allison Avenue or Ryan Road. Uh, the plat would divide the property, um, into, into two lots. Lot 1, Block 1 would be, uh, 12,500 square feet. Lot 2, Block 2 would be 11,761 square feet. Uh, and the alley, uh, will be 1,200 square feet or point 02 acres. Both lots, again, have the required amount of frontage on either Allison or Ryan Road. Two lots comply with the zoning, uh, city zoning standards for the R1 zoning district. Largest portion of lots are 60 feet wide and was the former location of the Airport Road. Airport Road has never been dedicated as a public street and therefore did not need to be vacated. It had been the city's intent to establish two lots in this location with plating of the Sarah Hill's First Edition in April of 2005. Status of conditions, uh, condition number one is to pay the plating fee of $260. Um, that payment has been received. Number two, to pay the Parkland dedic- dedication fee of $100 for the two undeveloped lots, payment has been received. Number three, to provide an electronic file of the plat in an AutoCAD 2016 or newer format, notice has been provided to the surveyor. And number, number four, provide, uh, an easement, a 10-foot easement abutting the front property lines of Lot 1, Lot 1 and Lot 2, Allison Avenue and Ryan Road, and then also a 5-foot easement abutting the rear or alley property lined for Lot 1 and Lot 2. And that status is easement areas have been provided on the plat. There are two attachments, the final plat and then the site location map. There's the final plat, there's the site location map. Staff would recommend approval of the preliminary plat with conditions since it complies with the city code requirements. And, uh-
This is final plat?
Yep, this is a final plat. So those conditions would be, uh, those conditions would be, um- So those conditions would be, those conditions would be, let me see here, I think, to provide the following eas, those easement areas as discussed in the status of conditions. And then also to provide the AutoCAD 2016 or newer format to the city of New Ulm. So those are the only two conditions outstanding.
By easement, do you refer to some kind of document or simply by inclusion in the plat?
It would be inclusion in the plat and it's.
Already there, aren't they?
Yeah, they're already there.
Okay.
Are there any questions? Further questions? Entertain a motion?
Make a motion to recommend approval with conditions of the preliminary plat of Sarah Hill's Fourth Edition.
Second?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No, motion is carried. Are we considering for approval the preliminary plat of Land Haven?
Yeah. Now again, I can skip the introductory part of this because this is the same property as the Land Haven Pewee.
Okay.
If you're fine with that, I'm gonna do that, okay. So the total platted area is 6.85 acres. The approximate dimensions of the property are 497 feet by 600 feet. The property has 498 feet of frontage on Jacob Street. The plat is configured in a U format with a total of 28 lots and two outlots, two outlots and a private street. Water and sanitary sewer will be extended from Jacob Street between the lots 1 and 7 and lots 8 through 14. So.
What we're referring to is the utilities will be coming right through here. Once the utilities leave Jacobs, are they private as well?
Correct.
Okay.
You're too happy.
Water and sanitary, okay, I just read through that. And also provided on lots 8 through 14. 14 of the lots will be, 14, that's incorrect, 22 of the lots will be able to accommodate residential living space. Natural gas and electricity will be extended to all the lots. The platted area consists of the following areas. Private road, 1.26 acres. Lots 1 through 14, 2.66 acres. Lots 15 through 21, 1.3 acres. Lots 22 through 28, 1.3 acres. And then outlots A and B, .29 acres for a total of 6.85 acres. So, would you like me to go through the lot dimensions? I can, okay. Outlet B has always been part with the city. The remainder of that property was the next in the city until, in September 21, 2022. The applicant again is proposing to develop a mix of residential housing on the property in two phases. Boy, this one wasn't my staff report, so I do have to say this. The property is proposing to develop a mix of both barn dominiums, 22 barn dominiums, and then eight, or sorry, six storage condominiums. Association will manage the activities within this development. We do have attachments which include the preliminary plat, site location map, zoning map, site map, and ground level photos. Staff would recommend approval of the preliminary plat with conditions since it complies with the city code requirements. Recommended conditions would be to pay the plating fee of $480. Previously paid the Parkland dedication fee of $1,050, and then the app.
Correct.
Yeah, that's not correct either. I'm gonna have to check on that. Well, to pay any Parkland dedication fees required to this property, with this property. Applicant to provide an electronic file of the AutoCAD 2016 in newer format. And then the applicant shall enter into a development agreement and provide an association agreement for review by the city. And that a resolution approving this plat be filed with the Brown County Recorder's That concludes the staff report.
Go ahead.
John, in those conditions, do we specify when these additional documents are due? Are they due with the final plat application or with something or?
No, they typically, typically they're handled within the time period between now and the final plat process. We could make it a condition, you know, immediately following the approval of the final plat. We haven't done that in the past or provided a time period, but that's a good suggestion.
Just seems if things get out of joint and out of sequence, and then things that are important to making decisions aren't available until after the decision's been made, and that bothers me a bit.
Would you have a day, a recommendation?
I mean, we'll talk about that, I'll think about that, I don't know exactly, but it just seems like it's out of sync.
Sure.
Has there been an issue in the past?
No, just cranky me.
No, but we have.
That's my point.
He's angry.
Oh, you shut up.
No, no, no.
We have had a number of plats that haven't been filed, one in fact we looked at tonight that had been sitting out for a long time.
Okay, good point.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, are there any questions? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion.
Make a motion to recommend approval of the preliminary plat of the New Ulm River Haven Edition with conditions.
It's Land Haven.
Land Haven.
Sorry, New Ulm Land Haven Edition with conditions. Correction?
Typo.
Sir?
Motion there, in letter E there. New Ulm River Haven and Land Haven.
Wow, okay.
There were lots of reports to write.
There were, and we had a very early morning discussion, and I didn't get that far either, so I didn't see that. I'm sorry, I would, I'll read further before I call you next.
We'll make that correction before it goes to the city council.
Okay. So I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll, I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. City council decisions concerning planning commission, do I really care?
I didn't prepare a report for that.
Oh, thank you.
Okay.
We can catch that in June. We'll save that one for Dave.
Okay, Elwood.
I do have a report.
Oh, great, I'm so glad.
Another two hours.
We did approve one canopy with some signage for Gray's, the new co-op. Talked about removing the Georges' property from the historical district.
Yes.
There anymore. Talked about the SHIPO conference coming up this fall. And then we got a request for any comments on the Garden Street project because it is a MINDOT project. So they had to go through and give us a chance to comment on any properties on that project, which there are none, so that's it.
Is the conference planning coming along well?
Yeah.
Nobody panicking yet?
Not yet.
Okay, that comes.
For the SHIPO conference?
Yeah.
We gotta get through today first, then we can panic.
I really think it's important.
I do too.
Yeah. Keeps us on the map.
Yes, it does, it certainly does. Are there any, is there any further business to come before the commission? Hearing none, this meeting stands adjourned.
No.
Yeah.